And I just need to check with our deputy city manager on one thing. Counsel? I've just conferred with our deputy city manager and unfortunately because of the recent emergency evacuation that we had, so happy to be back, our schedule has been put off a little bit and people who have been planning to be here may have some specific issues with staying to speak to items. So I'd like to ask our deputy city manager to maybe if you had any suggestions or advice as to how we should schedule ourselves in the next few hours.
Thank you Chair. So we do have, council has three public agency representatives registered to speak who are here in the chamber with us, three medical health officers from Vancouver Coastal Health. If at all possible, my recommendation would be that council extend to enable you to hear from the three of them before the dinner break in order that they can present the information that they have to you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, thank you. Thank you Counselor Weave, I have a motion on the floor to move to extend. Usually we break five to six, but we will, the motion that's being moved I assume is to consider the break, the length and when we break after we've heard from those three speakers, is that correct? Thank you. Okay, all in favor? Hang on Counselor Swanson, let me get your microphone on, yes?
I see that there's at least one other person here who wants to speak on the next resolution, could we include them too and maybe just go for another hour?
Counselor Swanson? I just said that we would talk about when we would break, I didn't say we would break right after the three, I said we would then entertain another motion and maybe that's a motion you want to move at that time, is that alright?
Okay.
What we're moving now is not to break, but to hear from these three speakers before the break, is that alright? Okay, so the motion stands, is moved, all in favor? Any opposed? Counselor Bly, you were holding your paper up, so I just want to make sure you were in favor, okay. Thank you very much. Alright, so we are now on to the second motion. Item number three on the agenda, yes, it's actually called that, the second motion, but item number three on the agenda is cannabis as a down, sorry, cannabis as an alternative to opioids and more dangerous drugs on the downtown east side, which was referred at the policy and strategic priorities meeting on June 12th and June 19th, 2019, and is to be introduced by Counselor Bly. Counselor Bly, do you, will you put yourself on the queue, I'm just going to clear all the queues, put yourself on the queue, I'll advance you and you'll have two minutes to introduce your motion.
Thank you Madam Chair. So this motion has been brought forward some time ago, but happy to have this now being discussed and to hear from speakers. So this motion has been brought forward to advocate for cannabis accessibility with the intent of being proactive. So as we transition away from recreational cannabis retail locations, or sorry, away from medicinal cannabis retail locations towards recreational retail, existing shops under the medicinal license are closing in order to reopen at some point in the future under the new provincial legislation. These shops have been feeling a desperate need in the downtown east side in providing low-cost cannabis to those who are managing pain and addiction to all substances including alcohol and opioids. I won't speak to the urgent state of the opioid crisis, we are all well aware of the situation that we are facing with harmful substances and accessing safe supply. So this motion has been brought forward as there are significant concerns by frontline workers and existing retailers who will no longer have options to support people in finding the cannabis that they need at the price that they can afford. So the motion's asking for three things, to ask staff to make recommendations to allow well-considered exceptions to exclusionary zoning, the motion does not have any intention in removing the exclusionary zoning as its original intent was to keep liquor and cannabis out of reach for vulnerable use in others in the downtown east side. Second is to engage with the liquor and cannabis regulation board and share the intention of the first resolution, and then finally to make recommendations with respect to options and pathways to enable access to low-cost legal cannabis.
Thanks Counselor Bly, right on time. Counsel, do we have any, or sorry, counsel? Now we will, now I'll entertain questions to Counselor Bly, she can answer, and she, you have a minute, one minute, but that includes not only your question, but the time that you allot Counselor Bly to answer. So I, I'll move us to question queue, if I don't see anyone on the question, oh, I think that was a holdover, Counselor Dominado? Yeah. I don't see anyone on the question queue, and we'll have an opportunity to discuss and debate this afterwards. Before we begin hearing from speakers on the speakers list, we have representatives from Vancouver Coastal Health here to provide opening comments, beginning with Dr. Patricia Daly, Chief Medical Health Officer, welcome Dr. Daly. And just, if you'll just give me one moment. We'll get to speak in just a moment, my apologies. I just wasn't sure because you were not on the official speakers list, as in you are a public agency and representative, if you got more than three minutes to speak.
No, I think we got three.
But I just wanted to check before we debated that as a counsel. So I, go ahead Dr. Daly, you've been here before and thank you very much for coming back, you know the drill, the timer's to your right, and you have three minutes, I'll start the timer now.
Thank you, and while I appreciate the desire of council to take actions to reduce the risk of opioid overdose deaths, there are two important reasons why I oppose this motion. First, the evidence that cannabis can reduce the risk of overdose for those with opioid use disorder does not exist at this time. Dr. M.J. Malloy, a Vancouver researcher, has concluded that the evidence to date from his own research is that it warrants further research of the benefits and potential risks of cannabis as a harm reduction strategy. He has not concluded the current evidence is sufficient to make recommendations for its use for opioid addiction, and I agree. Secondly, even if research shows cannabis is an effective harm reduction strategy, I would not support its delivery through a retail outlet model as proposed by this motion. Harm reduction strategies are best delivered through public health, not through retail sales. Let's take an example of another product touted for its potential for harm reduction, e-cigarettes. E-cigarettes could be a harm reduction intervention for smokers, but their retail sale has instead created an epidemic of nicotine addiction among high school students in North America, including here in Vancouver. The 2018 McCreary Youth Survey found 21% of B.C. high school students vaped nicotine in the previous month compared to only 7% who smoked cigarettes. And studies also show an increase in the likelihood that those children who vape will start smoking. In other words, this product has increased not reduced harm in our population. As a result, yesterday San Francisco introduced an ordinance to ban e-cigarette sales altogether. Similarly, for patients with alcoholism, providing alcohol through public health managed alcohol programs can be beneficial, but reducing the cost of alcohol in the retail sector has definitively been proven harmful and is strongly opposed by all experts. Cannabis is also a psychoactive substance known to be harmful to certain populations, people with certain mental illness, and I would note that there are many people with both mental illness and addiction in the downtown east side, and young people. Support by council for the retail sale of cannabis at lower costs in the downtown east side outside of the regulatory framework for recreational cannabis sales in Canada could result in potential harms to these vulnerable populations. Unfortunately, the cannabis retail sector has been quick to attribute health benefits to cannabis before evidence is clear or even exists, and discount risks, which creates a potential for harm. For example, despite being required by Vancouver City Council in 2015 to display health warnings for pregnant women, young people, and those with certain mental health conditions, they did not do so. Cannabis retail outlets have a track record of touting benefits regardless of the level of evidence and minimizing risks. This is the reason why harm reduction measures, which may have risks in addition to benefits, should only be delivered through public health models and not the retail sector, and that's why I am opposed to this motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Daly, there are questions for you. Counselors, up to three minutes for your questions, Dr. Daly, starting with Counselor Frye.
Thanks Chair, and thanks Dr. Daly. I have more than three minutes worth of questions, so I'm going to try and distill this really quickly. When we talk about opioid substitution therapies of this nature and kind of harm reduction, do, I mean, what degree of psychosis, you mentioned psychosis and that potential, and I'm wondering what degree of psychosis we might otherwise see from opioid dependencies or contaminated supply with like benzos and crystal meth and that kind of thing mixed in the, are they similarly contributive to psychosis potentially?
When I was talking about cannabis, there is definite evidence that it's at risk for people who have a mental health condition with psychosis, there is a relationship with people at risk for schizophrenia, and it may be a causal relationship. There are other substances that may be harmful for people with those mental health conditions as well, but the concern is that when you have a harm reduction measure and you propose something like cannabis, you have to be sure you provide it in a way that it maximizes the benefits and minimizes the harms. Selling it through a retail outlet to all comers is not the way to do it.
Okay, I appreciate that. I, you know, I'm wondering if you could comment on a similar sort of approach that was taken with alcohol distribution in the downtown east side, and I remember when the government-run liquor store was closed down on Main Street, I've lived there that long, and the result was almost immediately an increase in Lysol and rubbing alcohol and all sorts, and crack cocaine and other substances that people were using to address their need for a substance. Is that kind of clinically the case where people, if they have an addiction or a need for mood modification, that they're going to turn to whatever's available to them?
It doesn't mean you don't provide alternatives, so if you consider alcohol, I support the managed alcohol program in the downtown east side, which I think is supported by city council as well, which provides alcohol in a controlled way to people who have alcohol use disorder. However, I would not support selling low-cost alcohol in the downtown east side because that's definitively been shown to be harmful. It will increase the harm not only to people with alcohol use disorder, but it creates other potential harms to young people, it increases binge drinking and leads to overall population harms, and that's the concern if you were to sell it through a retail model.
Okay, I'll leave it at that for now actually, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Bly, questions? Dr. Daly?
Thank you very much, and thank you for being here. I wonder if you could comment on the difference in your expert opinion between social enterprise and a retail location, because the motion is actually addressing the potential for some sort of social enterprise, much like we have many of in the downtown east side, addressing lots of different things, lots of different needs, and so versus the, you're sort of commenting on the retail location, it's not actually what the motion is outlining, it's actually looking at the exclusionary zoning that could be a barrier to social enterprise. So I just wonder if you could explain in your expert opinion the definition between the two, retail and social enterprise?
Sure. Social enterprises may still be retail outlets, they may still offer things for sale to customers who come in, and that doesn't mean that they're, that they may not have potential harms depending on what they're selling and how they're doing it. So to me it's irrelevant whether or not the retail sale is through a social enterprise or not, and I would point out that none of the current outlets prior to legalization in cannabis are actually medical outlets, nor are they dispensaries, even though they use that term, it's a misnomer. These were all retail outlets selling a product for a potential profit, whether they consider themselves social enterprises or not, depending on how much money they're making. Medical dispensaries is actually a misnomer used to legitimize what they're doing, these are not people who have the expertise to assess whether or not the person coming in could suffer harm from consuming that product, and that's my concern.
So those stores have been open for at least two, three years now? I wonder, is there any sort of hard data that we've been able to gather in Vancouver in terms of what you're sharing and the negative impact of having medicinal marijuana? Because quite, you know, to be honest and with respect, I have heard the opposite, so I wonder if we actually have that data gathered considering we've had these stores open for quite some time?
Well first of all, they're not selling medicinal marijuana, there is a medicinal marijuana legal program in Canada, what they're selling is illegal cannabis. And now that what the federal government has done is allowing legalization of those retail outlets, because that's all they are. We don't have any data from them because they don't report data, so we don't know if they've sold to people who may have suffered potential harms, nor do we know if there's been benefits to those who have used it because they're operating, they're selling an illegal product. The concern we have, that I have, first of all, there is actually no evidence that cannabis will reduce the risk of opioid overdose among people with opioid use disorder. If there was, I would be the first person up here to recommend that we use it.
Okay.
And the second is that the analogies from other retail sales of psychoactive substances, that when you lower the cost, we definitely know it will lead to increased harms to a broader population.
I wonder if my last few seconds you could define evidence as it would be to Vancouver Coastal Health?
Yeah, there's no research studies that shows that cannabis can reduce the risk of opioid overdose in those people with opioid use disorder, and my colleagues will speak to further to some of the evidence in their time.
Thank you. Counselor Kirby Young, questions to Dr. Daly?
Thank you, Dr. Daly, appreciate you being here. I just want to clarify a couple of things that I heard here that I think there may be a distinction, because the motion does have language around, I think Counselor Bly referred to a social enterprise, but I heard you say, and I think this is an important distinction, managed alcohol program when you use that example, so is, the difference here, am I hearing correctly, is really about medically managed or personnel?
That's right.
Then that's the element that is missing?
Yeah, I think other harm reduction programs, we operate them in Vancouver Coastal Health, they should be operated through a public health model, through public health personnel as the managed alcohol program is, with medical oversight. That's how we operate all of our other harm reduction programs, and I'm the person in charge of those programs over Vancouver Coastal Health. All of them could have potential harms, so you have to manage them carefully, including managed alcohol. And if cannabis is proven to be a benefit, I would recommend that it be offered through a model like that, not through a social enterprise or retail model.
Okay, and sort of related to that, if I can, I've got two more questions, so I'll use the example of the OPS, the Opioid Prevention Society, which started before it was obviously endorsed by the medical community and serves a function, so do you see at all any parallel here in terms of that model with the science catching up and the fact that OPS stepped in in terms of preventing overdoses, or do you see this as materially different?
I see it as material different, and you know, I have great respect for Sarah and the work they're trying to do to reduce the harms associated with opioid use disorder, but they don't have any data from their site that they've been able to reduce the risk of overdose death among people who use cannabis, any good scientific data. The data so far in Vancouver is self-report, reports from people who have opioid use disorder, who use cannabis, who report that they then use less opioids. It doesn't mean they're, that's not scientific data to show that it would be of benefit at a population level, and we don't have any evidence that it actually reduces their risk of overdose death, because they're all still using opioids.
Okay, and I'll keep going, I really appreciate the, sort of the clear answers. Just writing notes here. The other one question that I had was really around the distinction that you made when you said that the stores currently, that Counselor Bly referenced are open, and so they have been selling, are not selling medicinal marijuana, they're selling illegal marijuana. So can you comment as to, for the layperson, is there any difference that's significant between those?
Well, by calling something medicinal marijuana implies that it's a pharmaceutical substance, that evidence has shown it's a benefit, like a prescription drug, and these outlets like to refer to what they're selling as medicinal marijuana, but it's not. There is a Health Canada medicinal-
How is it different, I guess that's what I'm trying to-
There is a Health Canada medicinal marijuana program that requires a prescription from a healthcare practitioner to access that marijuana with certain dosages, and even with that program, the College of Physicians and Surgeons in B.C. does not recommend that physicians prescribe it because the evidence to date is not clear yet for whom it might be of benefit, what the dosage should be, and it's not prepared in the way that other pharmaceuticals are. So while I'm strongly supportive of legalization of recreational marijuana, I also support better evidence to understand for whom cannabis might be of benefit, what health conditions, and then to have better data on how it should be used, the dosage, for whom, who should avoid it, we don't have that data yet.
Okay, thanks, I may have to come back on the next round to follow up on that, thank you.
There isn't another round of questions, this is my question speaker, so just to remind council, you have three minutes, and I'd mentioned that, so Counselor Swanson, questions to Dr. Daly, you have three minutes?
So you said that even if there were proven benefits of cannabis, that it shouldn't be sold in the private market, basically, it should be sold, it should be acquired through public health?
That's right, yeah.
So is there a public health way of accessing cannabis in the downtown east side?
There is not, because we do not yet have the evidence to show that it's an effective harm reduction strategy. If we did, I would be the first one up here, I would be the person who would want to implement that, but that data does not exist yet, despite what people may tell you. But having said that, I would also say that this motion is presented as if there's a crisis of access. In fact, Dr. Malloy's research also shows that current opioid users, a majority of them already are able to access cannabis through the illegal market, and they're likely to continue to do so because the illegal market is thriving, because we don't have very many legal recreational outlets right now. So there is no urgency in suggesting that council come up with a different model while we await further research to determine whether or not it's a benefit and for whom it might be a benefit.
Do you have any idea of the timeline for when you, when this research that's happening about the benefits of it will be revealed?
Well, we're fortunate that Dr. M.J. Malloy, who's a Vancouver researcher with the B.C. Centre on Substance Use, is a cannabis-funded researcher, and he started to do research, as I've mentioned, the conclusion, his own conclusion to date, and he's our local expert, is not that the evidence supports cannabis as a harm reduction measure. He recommends that we do a clinical trial of cannabis as a harm reduction measure for people with opioid use disorder or other substance use disorder and determine the risks and benefits, and I strongly support that, and I would suggest to council that you could, instead of this motion, support, ask staff to support his research in the downtown east side.
And how long would a clinical trial take?
That's, I'm not, I'm not the researcher, so I couldn't tell you that, there are other researchers looking at these questions too, but as I said, there is no crisis right now of access to cannabis for people who might choose to access it, who believe it's helpful to them. My concern is what's proposed in this motion, as with other retail sales of potential harm reduction interventions, e-cigarettes is the best example, because that has been shown to be a benefit to smokers, but because of its sale through retail outlets, it's actually at a population level caused far more harms than benefits, and that's what you risk even through a social enterprise model if you start to sell cannabis at lower costs in the downtown east side.
Thank you, Counselor Dominado, questions?
Thanks Madam Chair, and just before I get to questions, a point of personal privilege, I'm really struggling with the ongoing flashing fire light, I'm just wondering if we could have that turned off?
I believe there's been an email sent to council, and security is trying to reset that, but that came with the emergency evacuation?
I'm just saying because it's getting me an headache, so.
Perhaps I could just ask, ask our deputy city manager to comment on that?
So yeah, it is a function of the fact that the fire alarm, because the sprinkler system has not been reset, the fire alarm is still active, so security is working on that right now, I don't have an ETA, but they're looking at options, we may have to just cover them up, so we're working on that.
Thank you. Yes, thank you.
I understand, and an email's also been sent by the-
Okay, I hadn't seen that.
-security, and I just asked them to send an email to facilities, if they haven't done so already, they may have. Alright, Counselor Dominado, questions? Dr. Daly?
Thank you Madam Chair, and thank you Dr. Daly for being here today. I have a couple of questions, it stems not so much around the conversation around alternatives to opiates, although I can see that being a key focus of the motion, but recognizing that cannabis is being used and has been used by members of the public to deal with pain and pain management, and I'm just curious, like, I think about, I'm going to go from my own personal experience and also from family members, where you, you know, you go to, you have, here I am talking about headache, you go to the store, and I can go buy Tylenol, I can buy ibuprofen, I can buy a variety of pain management, they're all, they're drugs essentially, to manage my pain, and, and so I'm just curious about that and how that fits with the conversation we're having here about cannabis, because cannabis has, from people who have lived experience, it's been demonstrated to help them with pain management, and I think that's also something we're seeing in with individuals living in the downtown east side, and so just, could you speak to that a little bit? Because I'm trying to reconcile that with my experience of the retail of, I go to get Tylenol at the store and-
Pharmaceuticals you buy over the counter in a store have all been through appropriate clinical trials, they're manufactured in pharmaceutical plants, we know the correct dosage based on those trials which is printed on them, and there's been good evidence of their safety and effectiveness in that, and for those uses. With cannabis, because it's been illegal, we don't have that evidence, even for pain, and that's, certain types of pain, there is evidence in the literature of the benefit of cannabis, and that's why in Canada we have a medicinal cannabis program, you can access it, and this has been legal for a number of years, predating recreational cannabis with the appropriate prescription from a healthcare practitioner through Health Canada, but even there, the appropriate dose is not necessarily clear, there's not the same level of evidence as with those pharmaceutical products that are available in grocery, in drugstores and other places. So that's where we need to get to with cannabis, we're not there yet.
Yeah, I guess that was going to be my follow-up question, is could you see us going in that direction, because I think that-
Well, I think there's going to be lots of research on cannabis, and I think there will be benefits that will be shown, and in that case, hopefully, we will purify the components and offer them for sale in a similar way as we do to things like acetaminophen or other pharmaceuticals that have been proven to be a benefit. So I support the research, and I think we will find conditions for which there's a benefit, we'll get the appropriate dosage and trials, and it will be offered in a similar way that will reduce harms to others who may use that. I would point out that even with those over the counter products, there are potential risks if they're used inappropriately, so that's what we want to avoid by selling them in a retail model without that prior research and clear demonstration of both the risks and the benefits.
Okay. And I guess, so we won't have time to sort of get into this in deeper, but I'm just, the one, with this motion, really the way I see it is this is very exploratory, it is going away and having our staff looking at this in terms of our regulatory framework in the downtown east side, and, and we've considered many, many motions here, and often they are exploratory, so staff will come back, they'll consult with stakeholders, including health authorities, others, I don't see any harm in that, so I'm just wondering, you've expressed strong opposition to this already, and so could you speak to that a bit more?
Yeah, I think that the only authority that council has when it comes to recreational cannabis is over retail outlets. You have no authority over the medicinal cannabis market, you have no authority over harm reduction strategies delivered by public health, so I think you have a legitimate interest in harm reduction measures that would better be delivered by public health, I don't think that this is the right motion to do it. You could, for example, ask Vancouver Coastal Health to come back with their recommendations around harm reduction strategy, but using the authority you have around the retail market is not the right way to do this, I don't think.
I think I may be out of time.
Yes, yeah.
Yes, okay, thank you Dr. Daly.
Your questions, or, your questions were well put, your answers, I was waiting for a break in the sentence, so I didn't interrupt, but three minutes, actually what I'm going to do, and what I've done in the past, is I'll set your timer too, just so you see how much time-
Sure.
-council members have, I'm trying to be fair here, so. Counselor Boyle, questions?
Thanks, and actually my question follows on Counselor Dominado's, I'm curious, as you spoke to, there's already quite a bit of access, and this motion feels pretty, you know, it talks about well-considered exceptions, I'm curious to hear what you think the risk is here in the motions we're doing.
The exception would be that there would be an option for lower-cost cannabis for sale in the downtown east side. To me, that, given our experience with other psychoactive substances such as alcohol, such as e-cigarettes, we know that when you offer these substances at lower costs, you're going to have unintended harms to other populations beside those you think for whom it might benefit. And by the way, we don't yet have the evidence that it will benefit anybody in terms of reducing opioid overdose death, but we know with certainty that cannabis is harmful to young people and the developing brain, we know it's harmful to people with certain mental illnesses, we know it's harmful to pregnant women, so, and we also know from evidence that lowering the cost of psychoactive substances increases use and increases harms. Based on that evidence, I think this is not the appropriate way to go to explore whether or not cannabis can help those with opioid use disorder.
Okay, and my follow-up question is, I'm just trying to weigh those risks against the deaths that we're seeing, and get a sense of, my understanding is a lot of harm reduction has been pushing the bounds of what we know of testing, you know, what we have solid- research on. And so I'm trying to weigh those risks against knowing we need to be doing more than we're doing.
That's not quite true. All harm reduction measures must be appropriately researched, they must have evidence behind them, and are all delivered through public health models where we have oversight to gather the data. I was asked about the data from the retail outlets, we don't have that because it's not within a public health model. So we are not pushing the boundaries of evidence, we are recommending expansion of evidence-based harm reduction strategies. If I thought, if I was aware of any evidence that cannabis could reduce the risk of opioid overdose death, I would be the first person saying we need to implement this as a harm reduction measure. That evidence does not exist. And, and yet we know there are potential harms. There, it looks, if there is a promise that it could be a benefit, we need to explore it, and that's why I support the research. But I would not support moving right now to offering this as a harm reduction measure through even a social enterprise model.
Okay. Maybe I can just clarify, it's my understanding, there have been, that Insight and OPS sites were illegal in the structures where they were first set up, and then we adapted those rules around them. So help me, you're, I'm not the expert on this.
Insight was legal from the day it opened, and it was opened under a research protocol, and there was extensive evaluation in the first number of years, it's still ongoing actually, to look at both the potential risks and benefits. And it was operated by Vancouver Coastal Health with Portland Hotel Society. So it was operated through a public health model, and that's how all harm reduction strategies actually should be implemented and evaluated.
Okay, thanks.
Councillor Frye, you have a little more time left. You, you had, oh, you had 40 seconds left. I think we both agreed on that, so go ahead.
Yep. So just going off of councillor Boyle's line of questioning there, I'm just wondering, so, in fact, I remember when the, it was the Back Alley, formed in 1995 by Ann Livingston and Don McPherson, and it was illegal at the time, and led to the creation of Insight in a formal structure. Similarly, when John Turvey was doing illegal needle exchanges back in the 80s, and then it became a formalized structure. So is there a role for innovation to come from
There absolutely is.
...outside the system?
But then you need to evaluate it in a public health model and gather, gather the evidence of the benefits, as well as whether or not there are any risks, people for whom it might be of harm. And I would suggest that there was, that there was already evidence that clean needles were of benefit to people. There was already evidence of, in other places, of observed consumption being of benefit. Cannabis, we know there are, there are groups for whom it will be harmful, we don't have the same evidence of benefit, so we do need to evaluate whether there is evidence, whether there is benefit and for whom, and for whom it might be too risky.
Thank you. And I, I too have some questions for you, Dr. Daly. I'm just going to start my own timer, and then you can see my time as well. And thank you. I know we've been through a very long public hearing here together
Yes.
...about cannabis when we looked at the MMRU.
Yeah.
And, and I know that Vancouver Coastal Health made some recommendations. There were also some concerns, and it was all about evidence and what evidence we had, and, and that also helped our staff to look at the guidelines, how far away from each other they should be in schools. So in sort of setting my question up with that, also I'm looking at access. When I look right now on Health Canada, I see that it kind of, I called it before, the Amazon of cannabis. If I had a prescription, I could split my prescription, I could have it mailed to me. I understand in the downtown east side that people may not have a mailing address, but there are other ways down there for them to fill their prescription. Is there low-cost or no-cost ways? And could you elaborate on the current ways that they can do that? And also, yeah, maybe just do that and give me a little extra time at the end, because I have one more question for you.
Medical cannabis through Health Canada is used by hundreds of thousands of people. They have, they actually reduced the barriers to access it because of complaints that have been brought forward. So in absence of the retail model, which is all that really council has any authority over, the medicinal model is operated by Health Canada, and as they have lowered the barriers to access, they also allow people to grow their own as well, as you may know. So yes, those barriers have been reduced for people.
Okay. And, and you feel that they might continue to be reduced? Also, I'll ask you to answer this one instead, because I am limited with my time. What I heard from you when you came to speak to the public hearing, and it did help to inform my decision, and I think that Vancouver certainly were trying to work with the provincial federal governments. But also in, in the research that you just cited, the issues, the downtown east side is at the Naomi trial. Downtown east side, would this maybe send a message that cannabis could be an answer to all of the problems facing people with opioids? Or, for instance, we've recently seen people more and more talking about mushroom dispensaries or other things such as that. I was hoping you might be able to comment a little bit on what this could do in opening doors that could be harmful to people.
Well, I think it's harmful when people tout benefits that have not been proven, call themselves medicinal dispensaries, when really they're retail outlets. That can be harmful. The Naomi trial, the Salomi trial, all these innovative approaches were done through appropriate research with appropriate medical oversight, and that's all I'm suggesting. We should do the same for cannabis. I support research in the downtown east side, but I don't support this model.
And so you, what you're saying is, you might be back here in two years if the research is done?
Yeah, even sooner.
You may support this model?
Yes. And there is no crisis of access to cannabis in the downtown east side right now.
Thank you. That's my time. And, oh, I see that councillor Bly, councillor Bly, I think you are out of time for, I'm sorry, and speakers, but there are others from Vancouver Coastal Health here to speak. Thank you, Dr. Daly.
Thank you.
And next we have, here to speak also from Vancouver Coastal Health, Dr. Emily Newhouse, Medical Health Officer, Vancouver Coastal Health. And Dr. Newhouse, you'll have three minutes. The timer's to your right, and I'll start your timer now.
I very much appreciate council's commitment to creating the healthiest city possible, particularly for our most vulnerable residents. However, I would advise against the motion today. While it's often promoted as benign or health-enhancing, cannabis is not a benign substance. There are a broad range of health risks, but I'll highlight that from a mental health perspective, it can trigger psychosis in those at highest risk and worsen anxiety and depression. It can impact brain development and limit school performance, it can limit lifetime achievement and satisfaction, and particularly can be impactful when used by youth. So on the slide here, I'm showing you something called the U-shaped curve of harm, and this is why public health supported cannabis legalization. So the curve represents increasing harms of, the increasing harms at the extremes of control and liberalization of psychoactive substances. Of course, you can think of many of the harms associated with prohibition, gangsterism, and unpredictable products, but at the other extreme is full legalization and commercialization with promotion that drives up usage. So where we would like to be with psychoactive substances is in the middle ground, either prescription, decriminalization, or highly regulated availability in the case of cannabis. So similar to alcohol and tobacco, there are many different policy measures that reduce harms from cannabis. I have a couple, and I have a whole host here. The two I'll highlight for you are limiting availability, particularly through caps on retail density, as well as curbing demand through pricing policies. These are both measures that are crucial in minimizing health harms for the broader population. Pricing policies are particularly important for youth since youth tend to be price-sensitive. And zoning policies that restrict high-density clustering of alcohol or cannabis outlets can protect vulnerable communities from being disproportionately targeted by industry. So your current zoning restrictions do permit a moderate number of cannabis outlets while preventing such clustering in the downtown east side. So should cannabis turn out to be an effective treatment for opioid use disorder, the delivery of it should be through skilled healthcare providers, just like any other medication. And then access can be tailored to the appropriate population as opposed to having broader negative impacts on the general population. You as the city of Vancouver have significant powers that can be used to minimize harms for all of your residents. The city's policies are crucial to maintaining the overall public health regulatory framework to prevent the harms associated with full commercialization. The evidence is not adequate for cannabis substitution therapy for opioids, but even if it were, I would urge you to maintain pricing and zoning restrictions to protect both general populations and particularly vulnerable populations in Vancouver. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Under time, actually. And you do have questions from councillor Bly. Councillor Bly, questions to Dr. Newhouse? Oh, oh, okay, all right. All right, councillor Hardwick, questions?
Would it be possible to get that slide back up there? That was just a second ago?
I'll stop your timer while we do that.
What are those red arrows pointing at? What are you trying to get us to focus on there, please?
Sorry, I know it's quick, and maybe visuals are not actually helpful, given the quick timing. So I was just pointing to those two areas of public policy that are helpful in minimizing harms associated with consumption. One of them was limiting availability, and one of our main measures that we know is effective in reducing harms through, reducing availability is through limiting retail density. And the second one was pricing policies.
Next slide.
I can't hear you.
The following slide, not this one? That one?
So these are, this is a set of, of all the different types of public policies or categories of public policies that can reduce harms associated with cannabis in illegal retail environment.
Can you make this available to us?
Pardon me?
Would you make this available to us?
Sure, yeah, I would be happy to.
Okay, thank you very much.
Those all of your questions? Councillor Weeb, questions to Dr. Newhouse?
Yeah, some of the conversation in the motion talks about low cost for people on the downtown east side that are price-sensitive to finding alternatives. However, in your slide, it talks about curbing demand, but this is talking about the health side for the downtown east side. So can you be specific on that? I mean, this is the population we're looking to deal with in this motion?
Yeah, I think one of the points we're trying to make is that, you know, your powers as the city impact the availability of outlets that serve the general population. So although a measure that's looking at trying to improve cannabis access for a population that's using it for medical use, we would certainly, if the evidence was there, and I say if, if the evidence was there, we would certainly support looking at low-cost ways for people to access needed medications. But the tools that you have at your disposal are retail zoning that have impacts for the broader population. So when, when, when we think about the, the health impacts, we're not just thinking about the health impacts for those individuals who might be using cannabis for medical reasons, we're also thinking about the impact for the broader population. And we, we do feel that low-cost access to medication is important when something has demonstrated medical benefit, but through medical venues, not through retail or a social enterprise model.
And a lot of the medical benefit comes from the edible component of it. Do you think that that information or that data is being collected for when edibles become legalized?
So there's, there really, in some ways, is not, there are differences in terms of the rate of absorption of the active components of cannabis in an edible versus an inhaled. So with inhaled cannabis, you'll have a faster absorption and so more immediate effects. The differences in terms of health harms are really that inhaled cannabis comes with a lot of additional respiratory health harms, whereas edible cannabis may avoid some of those, although may have a lot more difficulty with dosing and more risks for unwitting consumption. So it's not that there's, there's new medical benefits to edible products, there's just a different risk profile.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Bly?
Hi there, Dr. Newhouse. Thank you very much for coming.
Let me just reset your timers. There you go.
So I just have a, as Dr. Daly was finishing up answering some of the questions, one of them was possibly we'll be back in two years and support the motion I'm asking, we don't wait, and, or, no, so, so, and support the motion. And so in, in that, where I'm struggling is to see that we, we have heard from Dr. Malloy and Dr. Wood that something that enables them to have that research focus, so what I've heard is that Insight was illegal or under the research-focused umbrella was allowed to open. And what I've also heard, which I agree with, is what the city has is zoning. You know, we allow it or we don't through zoning. This motion is not, is not time-bound, it's asking staff to consider zoning. And what we could do in the event that you do come back in six months, or eight months, or four months, or two years, and say, you know what, we do see, we have the evidence, because we know there are three doctors that are funded within Vancouver right now by local universities and, you know, are well-funded actually, because there is some substance to this research. So what I'm trying to reconcile is, I completely understand and respect the position of overall population health that BCH's mandate is requiring you to speak from, and we are speaking about zoning in this motion.
Sorry.
That's okay. We are speaking about zoning in this motion, so I'm just wondering if you could help me from your expert opinion, help me reconcile where we could go wrong with this motion if it's simply asking staff to look at how our zoning might be standing in the way of the inevitable, you know, evidence or research that could come from the studies that are currently underway.
I think the reason, I think the reason, so we don't see the, the delivery, delivery through a retail or a social enterprise model that would be changed through zoning as the appropriate delivery mechanism, even if this were to be successful. So you wouldn't have to change your city zoning. Let's say a few years down the road, we did see a benefit through studies that had a better research design than the ones that have been published thus far. You still wouldn't need to change your zoning to deliver that in a healthcare context. The healthcare providers would, would still be able to use that intervention without city amending the zoning.
Well, and I, I believe we should leave it up to our city staff to look at the zoning with all due respect in terms of the limitations in the 300-meter rule, and the Main Street in Hastings being the only place you can actually open a cannabis store in the, or location in the downtown east side, which is a part of this motion. We're talking about the three very distinct parts of this motion, so I'm out of time, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I do, I also have some questions. Too many for three minutes, but I'm going to try. My first question is, and I actually took a picture of this graph so I could reference it while I was, while I was asking my question, is when we go to the red side, and I spent a lot of time over the course of the last term where I was actually banned from saying the word cannabis and marijuana in this chamber, remember it, well, by a former chair. The information that I received from the Vancouver Police Department and questions that I sent to them was that a lot of the supply in the city of Vancouver through dispensaries, I mean, we're, we're not talking about the boards or the oversight that we have through our licensing process at the city of Vancouver, comes through an illegal market, which is often tied to, as it says here, gangsterism. I was hoping that maybe you could expand, and I'm putting you on the spot, perhaps could email you for the information, but some of the other health risks that come with that. Because I understand that, you know, that also feeds into trafficking and other issues, but, but what are the other health risks that come with that? You don't know what's in your drugs, these drugs can be mailed. Can you elaborate on that a little bit?
So you're talking just specifically on that left side of the curve?
I'm looking at the left side of the curve, I'm very interested by it.
So in public health, we sort of, we see health harms as broad, broadly. So when we think about things like gangsterism, of course, we're thinking about the violence that comes with it for communities. So I'm not just concerned about lung cancer or things that we breathe in, I'm also concerned about people's exposure to injuries and violence. So we do see illicit markets feeding crime and the violence and injuries that come with it. We also see, as you mentioned, poor quality control in the products that people have access to, so a lot of contamination, unexpected doses, inconsistent amounts, and of course, that is related to some of the opioid use crisis currently. So it's not limited to cannabis, this is something that we see with, with many, many substances.
So would it be fair to say that, I mean, through Health Canada, it certainly, or through the dispensaries that have opened in, in a way that they've met the provincial regulations, they've met the, the city of Vancouver's regulations, but in looking at the zoning here also, it's my understanding, and I do, I do appreciate that a council member did just say, we're just asking staff to look member did just say, we're just asking staff to look at it, but the actual direction of the motion is direct staff to make urgent recommendations to council with respect to this. So I don't see that as exploring, I see that as urgent recommendations, so we'd be back here for a public hearing again sometime soon. And I'm just wondering, is, is that how you would see it, that that's not exploring? I only have 10 seconds, I'm so sorry.
I'm sorry, I didn't quite understand the question.
I just wondered, you know what, I can email you that question, I was wondering if in, in your conversation, if what you had said was, you would, you would, or another councillor had made a point to you about this just being something that staff was exploring. The way I read the motion is that staff are to make urgent recommendations.
Yes, I think that was why we were concerned.
Thank you very much, I have lots of questions, I will email you.
Thank you.
Counselor Dominado has questions for you too, Dr. Newhouse.
Thanks, Madam Chair, I'm actually gonna take myself off the queue in the interest of time, and I can also email questions.
Okay, that's fine, and if we wanna send them through to our clerk, would that be possible, or is, is that all right?
Yep.
Thank you very much. Thank you. I don't see anyone else on the queue, thank you, Dr. Newhouse. Our next speaker on the list is, Dr., is it, is it Reika, pardon? Reika, Reika Gustafson. Dr. Gustafson is speaking as Deputy Chief Medical Officer with Vancouver Coastal Health. You have three minutes to address counsel, and the timer's to your right.
Thank you very much. I'm also here to speak against this motion, and I'd like to provide you more detail on the quality of the scientific evidence that, that was for this motion. A widely discussed study published in 2014 suggested that states with medical cannabis laws had a slower increase in opioid deaths than states that didn't. Unfortunately, both the meaning and the importance of this ecological study was widely overstated as evidence for a potential use of cannabis as a way to address the overdose crisis. Just two weeks ago, the Proceedings of the National Academy of Sciences published a study that looked at the same information but over a longer period of time. And what these curves show you, that that relationship was actually completely reversed. In other words, states that did have access to medical cannabis had a higher rate of increase of opioid deaths than states that didn't. This does not mean that access to cannabis increased overdose deaths. What these studies tell you, and what this analysis tells you, is that this relationship, we have absolutely no information about this relationship. So much of the discussion that was prompted by the original and, and widely promoted study is actually not based in any evidence of a relationship between access to cannabis and opioid overdose deaths. There were other studies that looked at what people reported about their own use of opioids, and the results of those studies are highly inconsistent. Some people increased their, some people didn't change their use of opioids, some people slightly decreased their use of opioids. One of the most concerning lines of argument for lower-cost cannabis is its use as a harm-reduction tool. We are in the middle of an opioid crisis, our community's suffering, we're all looking for a solution. This creates the perfect way for corporate interests to capture harm reduction, for corporate capture of harm reduction. And this is what, referring to cannabis stores as dispensaries, or referring to cannabis as medicinal cannabis, actually does. I'd like to remind you that a key principle of harm reduction is a commitment to evidence, and that at this time, we have no evidence that cannabis use has any consistent effect on, on opioid use, nor that it has any effect on opioid deaths. I would also like to remind you, because much of the discussion today was about individual benefit versus potential population harm, I'd like you to, remind you that we actually don't know whether a small increase or decrease in opioid use actually increases or decreases the risk of opioid death in the context of a toxic opioid supply. 60% of people who die of an opioid overdose don't use opioids daily. So actually, any effect that we're aiming to achieve, we do not know whether it would be harmful or beneficial to the people whom we are hoping to help.
Okay, thank you, that's, that's, questions, and I actually do have a question, follow-up on that one. I just wanted to clarify what you're saying, what you had said, just to make sure that I, I have, have this information right. So you're talking about individuals that aren't regular users?
That's right.
Of opioids?
So actually, Dr. Daly presented the preliminary findings of our chief-
Sorry, hang on, I just have to reset timers here.
Okay.
For some reason, my, my timer froze, maybe staff could try and reset it? Whole thing froze. Oh, it's because I'm not on the queue. There we go. Go ahead.
In January, Dr. Daly presented the preliminary findings of the Chief Medical Health Officer's report, and one of the findings was that 60% of people who are dying, who died of opioid overdose in our region actually were not daily users of opioids, they used opioids infrequently, and there is some concern that if you use opioids not daily, you may actually lose some tolerance and may increase your risk of opioid overdose. So in other words, that, this is also preliminary information, but I'd just really like to stress that even if we have reports of some people reducing their opioid, opioid use because they're using cannabis, in the context of a toxic drug supply, as long as they're using any opioids from that market, there is a risk of overdose death, and we don't know whether we've increased it or decreased it by adding another substance, as long as that, that substance is still being used.
Thank you very much for clarifying that. I also see that Counselor Kirby Young has questions for you. Counselor Kirby Young?
Thank you, Dr. Gustafson, I appreciate that, I can hear how passionate you are about this topic, and it's a critical one. I, I know that you're speaking kind of in terms of global populations when you reference 60% of people and individuals, I'm wondering, does VCH have any available information as it relates to the downtown east side population and how that may differ for some of those global statistics?
That's actually not a global statistic, that is the statistics of people who died in the city of Vancouver, sorry, in Vancouver Coastal Health, the majority of them were in the city of Vancouver, so that's our own local data, looking at who died here.
Okay, so that's really helpful context, so that's not VCH specifically, Metro Vancouver, that's Vancouver proper, and, and so that-
Vancouver Coastal Health, but Vancouver Coastal Health includes the North Shore and Richmond, but the majority of those deaths occur in Vancouver, the overwhelming majority of those deaths occur in Vancouver.
Okay, and of those overwhelming majority of deaths, this is something that council has also talked about a lot, is sort of the hidden overdose crisis, about how many people that this is happening at home versus kind of the, kind of hot spotlight area of the downtown east side, because it's so acute there and it's so visible. So are you able to shed any light between that, and, and again, like, within those stats, if that is Vancouver, or have we pulled out and seen a difference in pattern for the downtown east side?
The, the, again, most of our local statistics are dominated by numbers from the downtown east side, because that's where most of our deaths are occurring. There are deaths occurring outside of the downtown east side, but, but, and we certainly could look at that number within the downtown east side as opposed to outside the downtown east side, I would not anticipate a significant difference.
Okay, makes you say if anything, it would be the downtown east side that would be kind of driving the numbers, or skewing them just because of the sheer-
The sheer numbers.
The sheer number of incidences that are occurring. Okay, that's helpful context, thank you.
And now you have questions from Counselor Dominado.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Dr. Gustafson, for being here. I, I just wanted to follow up, I know it wasn't your comment about, but our, sort in terms of the city's purview and, and the regulation around retail outlets, but I'm curious, I'm looking at the, the final resolution around making urgent recommendations around to enable low-cost legal cannabis options. I'm just curious, would there not be potentially an opportunity, if this motion were to pass, for staff to consult with public health and Vancouver Coastal Health around a public health model that is part of a retail, so sort of a combined public health retail model? And just, and sort of, I'm thinking in the vein of sort of social enterprise as well, so I'm just wondering if there, like, I feel like there, it felt like it was sort of one or the other, but I'm wondering if there could be some opportunity to collaborate here.
Well, we always work with your staff, but I think at this point, even that motion is predicated on a suggestion of a potential benefit, and we don't have a suggestion of a potential benefit. And, and this is where I think, that's why we feel strongly about this. And one of the potential harms actually is that, that even considering reducing costs and, and, and exploring low-cost cannabis implies, and in fact plays into, the corporate capture of harm reduction. There is no indication that there's benefit right now, and there is opportunity for research. One of the things that legalization of cannabis has allowed us to do is to do research, and that research is happening rapidly.
Okay, and I'm just also, and I appreciate that, and explaining that in terms of, from a research perspective and clinical perspective where we are. I'm just curious about, I've heard that there, for individuals who are wanting to seek cannabis through our sort of current retail model, that there may be challenges if they don't, many people don't have ID or credit cards, and, and if you could maybe speak to that, is that, because that challenge or barrier, I guess?
Well, that specific barrier I can't speak to, but what I can tell you is that, that the Canadian Institute for Substance Use Research reports on substance use amongst street-involved youth and street-involved adults, and they reported that cannabis is the second most commonly-used product, and over 80% of both youth and adults who are street-involved report using cannabis. So there is no material indication that there is a difficulty accessing the product.
Okay, and I guess one last question is, I, I heard, and again, I recognize it probably wasn't your comment, but around individuals who may just simply going through non-legal means of, of getting cannabis, but is there not an inherent potential health risk in that as well, in terms of-
10 seconds.
So maybe you could just speak to that as well.
So fortunately, the cannabis supply is not contaminated, and yes, overall, we would like, we, we are aiming for a regulated supply.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, that's all of the questions, and counsel, I had said that, I mean, we're at 6:00 PM now, we do have a number of speakers that are registered to speak to this, in fact, we have five, let me just take a look, I just wanna check with the clerks to make sure that I'm up to date on the numbers. So counsel, I have nine speakers signed up to speak to this. Counselor Dominado, is that a holdover on the queue? Okay. So Counselor Swanson had called a point of information to ask if we could hear from one speaker, I tend to think that that's not great process, that you can't just pick one speaker, that we have to hear from, either hear from the speakers, or we'd have to break, for a meal break, so I'm just wondering, do, I mean, I'm trying to look around, see how counsel feels about this. My emails are slow, but I haven't seen an email. Counselor Bly is on the queue. Counselor Bly?
I think that with nine speakers, it's likely to be a number of questions to some of the speakers, and that could extend well past an hour. I wonder if counsel would be open to a shorter lunch, or shorter dinner break? I have 30 minutes, come back and hear from speakers and continue on? Yeah? So that, my motion is to have a 30-minute dinner break. I'm not seeing anyone saying no, that doesn't work for them, so.
Okay, so you don't need a second or an committee? It's okay, we've been back and forth today, and then maybe what we could do, counsel, I understand it's been a long day, we had a long day yesterday, is maybe after this motion, we could entertain if we take another break tonight, or two short 15-minute breaks, just so we can stretch our legs and that, but I'd be happy to support that. So I'll just ask for a show of hands, I believe Counselor Bly is suggesting, are you suggesting we break now, or we break in half an hour?
Break now.
Okay, so we break now, come back at 6:30? 6:30, and we would begin hearing from speakers on this motion, I, I wanna, we'll vote on that, but I also want to apologize to all of the speakers that did show up, and for the delay that was experienced because of the emergency evacuation. So counsel, all in favor? Any opposed? All right, we're recessed, we'll be back in half an hour. Okay. Welcome back, counsel. Oh, just a moment, I'm just gonna wait for speakers to come in, and it's 6:33, so we're going to reconvene now. I do see some speakers out in the hallway. Counsel, I need, I need everyone in their seats, calling everyone to order in your seat. Giving people a few, few moments just to come into chambers.
Whoa, these are magic. Sure, didn't have this at Park Board.
I know.
I know, like upgrades out here.
We didn't even have our own computers at the time, I don't think, either. Let's see.
I know, what is, what is going on?
The upgrades were not-
But we didn't have to wait like four meetings to talk at the thing either.
Yeah, I know. Actually, we, we could probably come together on that, so welcome-
And I was actually wearing a suit for like three times, and then I was like, you know what, and then today's welfare and it's overdose stuff going on in downtown east side, so I'm not properly-
There's no dress code at City Hall, but welcome back, everyone, just wanted to formally wait until everyone was in chambers. And our first speaker is Sarah Blyth, founder of High Hopes. This is not new to you, but the timer's to your right, and as you know, we've changed it. So we have a pilot, we have three minutes to speak instead of five minutes to speak. So you have, you have three minutes to speak to us, and each council member has up to three minutes to ask you questions. I'll start your timer now?
All right, I, I remember that we tried three minutes at Park Board and didn't go over very well, but I guess we'll see how it works for you guys. I, I think it's a good idea, actually.
Okay.
I know that there's one, and this may not be my privilege to do this, but there's a speaker who was a bit confused by the last three meetings that wants to speak, is there a process for him to try and get back on the list?
Can I, let me talk to the clerk about that?
Okay.
And maybe I'll give an answer on that after your presentation?
Yep.
But I'll start your timer now, and the timer's to your right, three minutes, thanks.
So I want to thank Counselor Bly for bringing this motion forward, and counsel and mayor for hearing me and all of us today. As you're well aware, we're in the middle of a crisis, and it's welfare day today, and it's crushing us, there's been, I've dealt with five overdoses on my own today with other folks, just with the benzos, it's just, in with the fentanyl, it's just been in, really intense, so I'm like fully cortisolled out right now, so, but, yeah. At the same time, we're looking at easy access to something that won't kill people and that eases people's pain, and the front line is the first to know what we need, and even when we're entering a crisis, like, we let people know what's, what's happening, including VCH, you know, when, when we're going into an overdose crisis, when we see other drugs, we see it, we see what helps people, and we try and let people know, and sometimes we're the first grassroots to know what's really happening on the front lines and what's actually really helping people, or what's really making things worse. And I can certainly say that in all my experience with cannabis is that, and I know it causes some people anxiety, but the people that it does work for, it really helps reduce pain and, and trauma. Like, every day in the downtown east side, I see people who, who wish that we had our program that we used to have, it helped seniors with pain, it helped veterans with PTSD, we're trying to survive a fentanyl crisis in the downtown east side, and this program was helping people, and we do actually really agree that more research needs to be done, that's really important. Yesterday, I went, met with MJ Malloy, and he really believes that we're in, you know, in the downtown east side is where we need to start that research on the overdose crisis. And we're working with the BCCSU, we also received a grant from the Vancouver Foundation for three years of research project for the community to research itself, so community members in the downtown east side to see what they need, and working with other research groups such as BCSCU on, on that, and so, yeah, of course, let's just see, we did a few internal studies when High Hopes was up and running, one by the Canadian Mental Health Association, 70% of respondents identified at, at least one having one mental health issue, including anxiety- including anxiety, depression, and PTSD were the highest. Sixty-five reported that they had experienced an overdose. People are trying to live through a nightmare with no choices. Buying cannabis should be simple. Cannabis is legal, it's never been easy for homeless to get legal medicinal cannabis because they didn't, don't have money and a credit card online access. We're pushing people back into the criminalized market, but there are barriers for the downtown Eastside community to have safe access to legal medicinal cannabis that is high-grade and legal, and, and it's really, like, it doesn't make really any sense.
Enter a little bit over time, I didn't want to interrupt, but Counselor Carr has questions for you.
Oh, okay, yep.
Counselor Carr, up to?
Thank you.
Three minutes, questions to speaker.
Thanks so much for waiting around and for the work you do in the downtown Eastside. My questions, well, one, my first starts with a point you made, where you said it does cause some people anxiety. Do you think there's any risk associated with that in terms of increasing anxiety amongst people if they did have more access to inexpensive cannabis?
Well, I think, you know, the, the folks that I've seen that have had anxiety from it generally know, and they say, well, I don't want to deal with that anymore, and, and it, so it just doesn't work for them. And, and so there is a percentage of people that it doesn't feel good when they use it. They tend to use CBD, which is another, another, it's, it's, it's just another, it's not THC, but it's, it's something similar.
So are those individuals basically self-medicating and making the choices on their own, or do you have staff or individuals who can help in any decision-making?
You know, I think it's up to, you know, it's a, really, what it comes down to is it's a choice. You know, people in the downtown Eastside being able to have, have choices, a lot of people tell me that they use it for sleeping at night instead of opiates, or, or, you know, benzos or other things, they just use it to reduce pain at night. And, you know, using alone is, a lot of people are dying when they use alone, so just making sure that they have personal choices in the downtown Eastside, that they're the same as other people in the city, and that there shouldn't really be, doesn't make a lot of sense that there'd be a reason why the downtown Eastside would have more restrictions than other communities, in my opinion.
Right.
Especially since it's helpful for pain and, and PTSD, which a lot of people suffer. Yeah.
Right. You've talked about having a three-year research grant with the Vancouver Foundation. Wonder if you could just give us a little insight as, in terms of the, what that grant's focused on, and is it doing, do you have, are you working with doctors, and is it providing evidence in terms of the effect of the use of cannabis, in terms of mitigating other health issues?
Thirty seconds.
Okay, so, so it's not, that, that isn't focused on cannabis, but would be interested in partnering with MJ, seeing it as some of the folks would like to, if they had the opportunity. Internally, the peers would like to do that as part of their research, would be on cannabis as well. Does that make sense?
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Carr for respecting the time. Counselor Blythe, questions to Ms. Blythe?
Yes, and thank you for being here, Ms. Blythe. I wondered if you could, sort of heard a bit of a conflicting story with the, not story, but a conflicting point of view around the abundance and availability of cannabis in the downtown Eastside from previous, from the Vancouver Coastal Health representatives there. So I wonder if you could comment as a frontline worker, your impression of that?
Yeah, well, in the downtown Eastside, to get a medical cannabis, it's literally impossible, because if you're homeless, or you don't have an address, or you don't have a credit card, you can't order, most of it's ordered online. It's hard to get a prescription in the first place. It's not even a prescription, it's just a recommendation, and it's very costly. It can cost up to seven hundred bucks just to get one from a doctor, so, you know, it's very, very difficult, and so that's not easy to access medical cannabis. And then getting the stuff on the street, if you saw the stuff that you, you know, got right, you know, on the corner on the street, it's easy, really easiest to access, it's not, it's just not high-grade medical cannabis, or, you know, what, what people would consider quality cannabis, even that the, you know, the retail shops are, that have, that are unregulated, so. It's just important that there's access in the downtown Eastside, and, and mainly because so people have a choice.
Right, okay, I'm gonna pause my comments there and allow other people to ask questions that may come back on.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. Counselor Hardwick, questions to Ms. Blythe?
Thank you, Ms. Blythe, for being here. I listened very carefully to the Vancouver Coastal Health folks. Pretty persuasive.
Yeah.
The core here was that there's no evidence that cannabis has an effect on opioid use. They don't have the data to support it yet, and they felt that they, they couldn't make recommendations because there was insufficient study done.
Yeah.
My inclination, based on that science and, and their expertise, is, is to do the research and find out, get, get to where we need to be so we can do this legitimately, so no one's gonna, you know, think that we're going off half-cocked, pardon my use of phrase. How do you respond to that? You know, you've worked with the Vancouver Coastal Health people, you know, you know, their commitment.
Yeah.
How do you respond to that?
Yeah, I, I, you know, I, I think that we need to do, we need to work together, obviously, with Vancouver Coastal Health, and I do believe that, in, in all of the work that I've done over the years, which is like pushing the boundaries, grassroots-level work, where, you know, the bureaucrats need to come alongside eventually, when the grassroots know what's going on. And I think this is one of those cases, and, and I do agree that, that obviously, eventually, everything will come together. But I think that we're very leading edge in terms of on, being on the frontline and seeing what actually helps people. I, I hear from people every day of what helps them and, and what, what they would like to have access to. This is one of many things. It's just personal, the, the ability to be able to access what people need and want to is very important, I think.
Now, quickly, by bureaucrats, you don't mean those doctors that spoke to us, do you?
No, no.
Okay, yeah, that's just, I'm concerned about that again, because I'm listening very carefully.
Yeah.
I don't think, I didn't get the impression that, that they didn't want to help, or they didn't have a positive attitude towards it, but that they wanted more scientific rigor around the process, and to institutionalize.
And I agree that we do need more research, but I also am working with some of the lead research folks, or we're working with some of the, MJ Malloy, I sat down with him yesterday, and he's the one who's going to be researching, doing a lot of the research on cannabis in the future, and, and in order to do that research, we need some, we need some help, and it's, there's some grassroots effort that needs to be made.
So jury's out for me, but thank you very much, I appreciate your, your, everything you do, but your input here, thank you.
Thanks so much. That's your time, Counselor Hardwick. Counselor Frye, up to three minutes for questions to Ms. Blythe.
Yeah, thank you. Hi, Ms. Blythe, nice to see you. I wonder if you could speak a bit about the context of supply in the downtown Eastside right now? How do we, are we sure that we're getting safe supply? Is it well-regulated? And, you know, because some, obviously, some marijuana product or cannabis products are more powerful, like shatter, and then some are sometimes cut with other things. And, you know, and, and the distinction between, say, compassion clubs and, and the retail model, and, and how do you see a retail model fitting there? Is it, should we be focusing more on a compassion club kind of model?
Yeah, I mean, we, we definitely need, in the downtown Eastside, like, social enterprise compassionate models where people can get access if they need it, if they don't have money. There's a lot of times, you know, where I give people food when they don't have money for food, or I give them, you know, extra money when they don't have money. I mean, there's a lot of situations in the downtown Eastside where you're helping people deal with pain. I, I see people come in, you know, that have come to me in pain, and, you know, that worked really, you know, is working really hard, that use like very little methadone or fentanyl now, and, and like supplement mostly with cannabis. And so I see these stories, I see them a lot, and I see them every day, and, and, you know, they go to different places, but, to get the cannabis, but if it's hard, really hard, and it's harder than getting other things, then sometimes they slip back to using other things. It's not, it's definitely not, you know, the solution to the opiate crisis, right? But it's, it's a choice that, that should be easily made, as much as you could do that in any other community in Vancouver. I find that, that there would be exceptions in the downtown Eastside to rules, that that's really concerning to me. It's, it's.
Well, so, just with my last little bit of time here, would it be safe to say then that you'd be more in fit, or that there's more need for a compassion club model than a retail model?
Yeah.
Like, for instance, a Donnelley's or whatever?
Yeah, yeah. Compassionate, where, you know, it would, it would help fund research, it would help, you know, make sure that people get safe access, that they are able to get the amount of cannabis that they need.
Okay, I appreciate that.
A lot, I mean, a lot of people, I talk to a lot of people that are in NA, I talk to a lot of people who are in different programs, and a lot of ways that they get off of hard drugs and they stay sober from, for long periods of time is through using cannabis.
I know that too, yeah.
Yeah. It's not a, it's not really a secret.
Yeah. No, thank you very much, and thank you for the work you do.
Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Frye. Counselor Kirby Young, questions?
Hi there.
Hi.
Thanks for being here. I really appreciate all you do, and it makes me smile when I see you, because when I first got on Park Board, and I would say, hi, to people, I'm Sarah, and they said, oh, Blythe? So I went through that for a while, but. I, I think what I'm trying to kind of square my mind here, or get clear, is really around kind of the, the notion of the retail store versus what Patricia Daly was talking about in terms of managed oversight. So it kind of strikes me, and not being a medical professional and frontline like you, but there is a bit of similarity to what she was talking about with OPS, because when you go down and you see what you guys are doing, it is in a way managed, and there's oversight.
Yeah.
So there are people there supporting, and that's happening, and so, which is not necessarily what's being proposed right now in this motion. And so I'm wondering if you feel that that would be helpful, or there's a missing gap there, because we seem to be talking about different models. That's kind of where it's coming down for me. Do you want to comment on that?
I don't know if I completely understand.
Well, I think just that, you know, the ability to go into, whether it's a socially licensed store otherwise, and just purchase and take away, versus what she was suggesting is it's medically managed, it can be given by medical professionals, there's people there to answer questions or provide support. And so that's where I, in hearing Patricia Daly, it was the fact that there wasn't that medical management, it seemed to be a key concern for her.
Yeah, I mean, like, we, well, we have overdose prevention sites where we have, you know, we're there, and, and frontline workers are there. And I think that, you know, just like, something like East Van Roasters where, you know, people can come in and, and make decisions about what they get, and, and that we would be able to offer them a fair price, you know, or someone would be able to offer them a fair price, that it would be easy for them to access it in the downtown Eastside for, from some organization, that, that it would make it, that they would be able to make, you know, decisions in their community, and, and be able to access what they needed, when they needed, as an alternative if they wanted to. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does, and I think that kind of leads into my other question, because you're there and you're seeing this all the time, is there's, there's a different, there's a question around access, and then there's a question around the relationship of use of cannabis, and if, is that helpful in terms of people using opiates? So that's the other thing I'm trying to square in my head, because are there two different things happening here? One being around access, the other one being, is, in your opinion, and, and I think the medical professionals seem to really emphasize this, that they weren't seeing any relationship, that it was decreasing use or harm from opiates, but it was something that people might be using as well as? Is that your experience in terms of what you're seeing?
Well, I've, I've seen people use, like, CBD and full-on psychosis, where they would be hospitalized maybe for days, and, you know, and, and a few situations where they've calmed down to, you know, within like a half an hour, forty-five minutes to a situation where they were feeling okay again. So it's not a miracle, but it does, it will help with, like, crystal meth psychosis, when people are, have really bad nerves, sometimes if they, you know, if, if it works for them, if they smoke a joint, it makes them feel more calm, a lot better. Those are some examples of just things that you see, and, and, you know, that I get to see from my point of view, how cannabis helps people and makes them feel better, and.
And that's your time, but Counselor Blythe?
That's helpful, thank you very much.
Has a little more time.
So in my small amount of time line?
No, no, I, I, you had a minute and thirty-four seconds that you asked, so I'm just saying I can't turn it on.
That's okay.
But I just wanted to let Ms. Blythe know, I couldn't turn it on for you. I try and turn that on, on the side, so that you can see how much time a council member has left.
Oh, yeah.
I won't be able to, but she has a minute and thirty-four seconds left, so Counselor Blythe, questions?
Thank you. So I just wonder if you can share in a short amount of time, your experience opening up OPS, similarities or differences to what you're with High Hopes, possibly Compassion Club, the different ways that this motion is trying to address the need that you're articulating?
Yeah, I mean, the, what we did with OPS is we just, I mean, we pushed the boundaries to allow people to do things that they were really wanting to do, or already doing. We were just helping people that were using in the alley to do it safely, and, and I think in, in a lot of ways, it's, it's a similar thing where, you know, we're, we're giving people, we would want to give people, like, very easy access to something that would help them, and make it very simple. So I think just, just giving people the choice to use what they want to use, and, and that they would have, you know, affordable prices, like, it's not affordable, you know, in the new retail stores for twenty dollars a gram, it's, that's less than, or it's twice as much as fentanyl costs.
Right.
So it's, you know what I mean? It's, it doesn't make a lot of sense.
And is there a concern for you that it is twice as much as fentanyl, and we know that we're dealing with that in the downtown Eastside?
Yeah, I think, I think we need to make sure that, you know, that if we, if we want the gangsterism part of the equation gone, you don't want them to be, you know, selling fentanyl for less than something that could, you know, could be helpful, or, you know, I, you know, I think I've.
That's okay, I'm out of time, but I appreciate you being here, thank you.
Want to wait for people to, try and wait for people to finish their sentences. I actually have questions, so I will put myself on the, the queue, and. Thank you, Ms. Blythe, for coming and for the work that you do.
Thank you.
Just in hearing some of the, the answers to my questions from Dr. Daly, and from her colleague, Dr. Newhouse, also, just, just to touch on what you were talking about, sort of eliminating, I suppose, some of the other issues that come with supply, the illegal drug supply, and I'm not talking about just necessarily the clean supply, but the fact that, that this is coming through often gangs and, and other, it's my understanding that it was eighty percent of dispensaries, at least, in the city of Vancouver, VPD believed when they sent information to council on questions that I had asked last term, of, of that somehow had touched the hands of, or was supplied perhaps by that world of, of gangs and organized crime, and then looking at money laundering and trying to minimize all of that at the city of Vancouver also. My question to you is, do you think, I mean, right now, that model isn't mature enough in that we have, I think, three dispensaries open right now that have followed the provincial and the, the provincial and our municipal guidelines? And I expect to see more of them come online as we go through this process. Do you think that it would be helpful to kind of follow that process and make sure that we were doing all that we can to make sure that not only do we have a clean supply, but a supply that is free of, of the other things that may, may be brought to the downtown Eastside with this cannabis?
Well, I, I do think that there is, and I know this for sure in, in talking to people on the front lines that are in the middle of the overdose crisis, I see about seven hundred people a day, and, and they, you know, they can't afford, most of them are homeless, they can't afford barely food or anything else, so, you know, having a, a social enterprise, or any kind of a compassionate-type model where they could access something safe, they know what it is, it's medical, it's, it's legal, and has gone through some sort of a process, that that would be, you know, beneficial to people in the community. a process, that that would be, you know, beneficial to people in the community.
Thank you very much, thanks for coming and for taking time out of the important work that you do. That is all the questions I see for you. So next speaker on the list is, oh, and my apologies, I did mention that I would check with the clerk, and unfortunately, because we have said no to other people in that same situation, it, it would be a slippery slope to say yes to one person who did show up but took their name off the list, so I'm really sorry, but I have to make the rules the same for everyone. That being said, you can email your, your correspondence or anything you have to say into council, and I'll give you the email address now, but if you need it afterwards, we can talk to the clerk. So it's cclerk@vancouver.ca. I hope that's helpful. Next is Tara Taylor, Chair of the Downtown Eastside Economic Development Society. Is Tara Taylor here? Okay. And speaker number four is withdrawn, Dana McInnes. Okay, please, if you'd like to come to the podium to present to council. You have up to three minutes, and the timer is there to your right, and I will, I will start it now, and, oh, before I start it, I'll let you know that council members may have questions for you afterwards. But I'll start your timer now.
Okay, thank you very much for letting me speak today. Thank you, councillors. I'm here today on behalf of Sarah. Sarah asked me to come and speak with you today as a representative, as someone who lives and works in the downtown east side and who is also a member of the OPS, the Overdose Prevention Society. Our, I, I mean, our big question today is whether or not cannabis would be an effective tool for helping people overcome their opiate withdrawal or to get off of opiates in general. And as somebody who has personally struggled with that, I have had very effective results using cannabis for pain, which is one of the reasons many people on the downtown east side use opiates is for pain management. I have not seen any negative results, and this is all anecdotal, mind you. I, I don't have the, I don't have the reports or the research that, that, that doctors I, I just would like to say that I've seen many people benefit from the use of cannabis in treating their opiate withdrawal or their opiate use. I think that without it, there would be a lot more people struggling, a lot more money going into the hands of drug dealers. It's, there's a lot of symptoms involved with opiate withdrawal. Some of it is sickness, nausea, some of it is pain. Cannabis is effective in treating both of those symptoms. Cost is an issue. Most, most people that are struggling with drug addiction, especially opiate addiction, are spending a great deal of their money on opiates, so there is not a lot of money left over at the end of the day to buy things like cannabis that even help them go to sleep at night. Right now, I'm not a cannabis smoker. I, I ingest two cannabis cookies before I go to bed, and I find that incredibly effective in helping me get sleep at night, and sleep is critical. Unfortunately, many people that are struggling with drug addiction on the downtown east side, they're, they're living outside and it is near impossible for them to sleep. Yet, when they use cannabis and they, they find a stable place to live, they're able to sleep at night because they're able to deal with a lot of the pain that usually started them using opiates in the first place.
And I'm sorry, but that's...
Am I over time?
Oh, Councillor Fry has a question for you.
Thank you.
Might be what I...
Thanks, Mr. McInnes.
There we go.
Thanks for sticking around. I want to just ask you a little bit more about, about, I mean, because I appreciate the pain management component of it. Now, obviously, we have a sort of a retail environment for cannabis distribution and a more medical environment. Which do you think would be more appropriate in, in the downtown east side for addressing some of the real sort of chronic health issues that we have in the downtown east side?
My response probably isn't what most people on the downtown east side would like, but I think of cannabis more as a medicine than as a recreational drug. So I, in a way, I would like to see cannabis treated as a medicine. So I, I think, in response to your question, I think that it's, it should be dispensed more as just something freely given out. But I also feel that that could be done at a dispensary, if there's a proper professional there. If he could easily prescribe at the dispensary the right kind of cannabis necessary to help with their particular health problem.
I really appreciate that response now, and you don't have to get too specific, and you don't have to answer anything that I ask you, but as far as acquiring supply, I mean, I'm assuming you've got a reasonable hookup and it's pretty consistent. Do you, do you think that some of the supply that's arriving to downtown east side is of good quality, or could it be, is it, is it stepped on with other things, or?
The, the cannabis that I use comes from an organization called High Hopes, which is run by, by Sarah Blythe, and I find that the quality of the cannabis is excellent. They come in very, very easy-to-eat little cookies. If I can, they're eas- they're easy to ingest, it takes about an hour for it to become effective, and I can sleep for eight hours that way. And through, through High Hopes, that has helped me immensely, where I was unable to sleep before.
Do you know of other sources that are, are not as well-procured and, and thoughtfully distributed? Not that you...
There are still, there are still people, there are still private dealers that, that sell marijuana or cannabis. They usually don't sell them as edibles, though. It's usually sold as loose, loose-leaf cannabis or buds of cannabis. Their price is often higher than what is found at a dispensary, or especially with High Hopes. Yeah, High Hopes has helped me immensely.
Thank you. Councillor Blythe has questions for you. Councillor Blythe?
Thank you, and thank you very much for being here, Mr. McInnes. I, how long have you been working with OPS, in a member of OPS?
I started working with OPS approximately a year and a half ago, and it was approximately one year ago that I heard about High Hopes. I was having trouble sleeping, and when I heard about High Hopes, I asked if I could become a member, and I was accepted. And, yeah, basically, I requested two cookies a day, and it, yeah, was fantastic.
And what do you do while at OPS in terms of daily tasks or when you're working there?
My job at OPS, I'm, I'm called the responsible person in charge, so, be that as it may. It's called the R, the RPIC, and I'm the overdose lead, so when somebody has an overdose, I am the person that is supposed to arrive first, assess the situation, and make sure that they get proper care so that they can survive their overdose. And we wait until the paramedics arrive, and I administer Narcan, I set an airway down the, down the throat to make sure that the oxygen can go in properly, and I assess their vitals with something called an oximeter, which makes, well, it tells me what their blood oxygen percentage is and how, how fast their heart is beating. I also have to be aware of other things, like, they might be suffering from diabetes. I look for a medical alert bracelet, check pupil dilation, yeah, there's a number of things.
Wow, that's very involved, and I imagine there's been training that's been provided to help you be able to feel confident and comfortable doing that kind of work.
Yeah, very much.
Well, thank you for doing that. My final question is, how often or, or do you, anecdotally, have people come and ask you about the availability of cannabis at OPS?
At least once a day.
Once a day?
Yeah, once a day. They, they've come in or they've heard about the High Hopes program, and I, I, I tell them what's involved in the program, that they need to apply.
And how many, how many options do you actually have to offer them?
Right now, I'm aware of at least three options. There's cookies...
Organizations.
I'm sorry, that's your, that's your time, but Councillor Carr has questions for you.
Oh, sorry.
I have to be, I have to be fair to everyone, or I get in trouble.
I'll talk quicker.
There we go. Councillor Carr, questions?
That was Councillor Blythe's time, not your time.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, thank you very much for coming, I really appreciate it and the, the work you do in community. So you're very close to a lot of people, and I'm, we heard some of the submissions earlier from the representatives of coastal health, et cetera, and they indicated that potentially there were negative health impacts in taking cannabis. And I'm wondering, in your experience, have you seen negative impacts regarding taking cannabis?
Personally, I have not seen any negative impacts of taking ca- yeah, from smoking, from eating. To me, cannabis appears to be less dangerous than alcohol or tobacco. I, I've never heard of a cannabis overdose. I've never heard of somebody dying from cannabis. I, I have heard of some individuals consuming too many edibles by mistake, they usually have to go to the hospital after that, but to, to, to best of my knowledge, there's never been a, a permanent damage from that.
Such as schizophrenia or, I mean, I think that's one of the examples that was used.
It, I, it is possible, I, I have heard of those things, but I, in my own experience, I've never seen that.
Okay, I'm, I'm asking you just for your own experience, so I really appreciate that, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much, and that's all the questions for you.
Okay, thanks, thank you.
The next speaker on the list is Mel Pratt. No? Evin or Fieven Burhing? Fieven, sorry. And you, I'm sure you've heard, three minutes, timer's to your right, and I'll start it now.
Good evening, Mayor Stewart, Madam Chair, City Council members. I want to thank you for allowing me to speak on this important issue. I'd also like to thank some of the city council members here that have answered my emails and met with me in the past. I'm speaking to this motion in favor of this motion as a small business owner. I had a non-medical cannabis store on Commercial Drive prior to federal legalization. I have firsthand knowledge on the importance of having clean, safe, accessible retail cannabis stores. It's a bit disappointing in 2019 to see the city of Vancouver to be restrictive by allowing exclusion zones and restrictive distancing. These barriers create near impossible approval without going to the Board of Variance and other difficult administrative obstacles. While my store was open, from October 2017 to October 16, 2018, I served a lot of clientele from the downtown east side. Some of those individuals were dealing with addiction, homelessness, and mental health issues. Many shared that having cannabis at a cost that they could afford greatly assisted the quality of life. As I'm not a medical professional, I can't speak from a medical perspective, however, I can speak as a community member and firsthand knowledge, seeing the positive impacts of seeing people dealing with addiction and medical, or mental health issues. In a completely different pretext, as meant, as retail cannabis is now federally legal, I do believe the city of Vancouver should be progressive and, and fair to the citizens in allowing access to cannabis in all communities and all neighborhoods. I think it's completely unfair to say this neighborhood can have it and that neighborhood can't. If the federal government is mandating that cannabis is legal, then we should allow access to all those communities. And a note on that, I thought one of the progressive cities in the province was the city of Nelson. They actually voted in city council to allow the retail stores to continue operating if they were licensed with the city of Nelson while they were getting their applications into the province of British Columbia. I know that that was until January 2019, I'm not sure what happened after that. And just a note on the Vancouver Coastal Health doctors that were speaking earlier, one of them had mentioned that there's a lot of legal, or not legal, I shouldn't say, but there was cannabis in the downtown east side. I just thought that was really unfair because as a business owner, I don't feel like right now it's safe for me to operate, open up my store right now. I could face federal, or sorry, I could face criminal charges and fines. The city of Vancouver did order me to shut down until I got my provincial license, so I thought it was unfair for her to state, well, they have, they can access cannabis. What cannabis is it that they're accessing and what framework are they allowing for individuals to access this cannabis? Thank you.
Thank you. You do have questions from Councillor Fry. Councillor Fry?
Thank you. I appreciate the context you gave to this, that you're, you know, an ethical cannabis provider, that you take that responsibility seriously. I think I'll disagree on restrictions and bubble zones because I don't think that all cannabis providers have proven to be ethical, and I've known that not to be the case all the time, certainly not assuming anything beyond that. But I do disagree with you on that. But I'm wondering if you could explain to me a little bit the difference between why you're a non-medical cannabis provider and what, what is the, why aren't you a medical cannabis provider, as opposed to recreational?
So my relationship with cannabis comes from, from family, having family members dealing with pain, family members that were diagnosed with cancer and terminal illness. I'm not a medical, I don't, I don't have a medical practice, I don't, I don't have any medical background, all, when the store was open and people came and asked for medical advice, we never gave any. I always ask people to do their own research, to get as much information as possible. But I do believe in, I was a retail store, we had cannabis that was all clean and tested, that I tested myself and paid for from myself out of pocket, but we had cannabis that was available at a low cost, we had cannabis that was available at a, I'm sorry?
I didn't say.
Okay.
Sorry.
So as a, I, I just wasn't comfortable being a medical store. I, I do think that the federal government, like with the MMRUs, getting a medical card, getting it delivered to your house, and, and that framework works. I just wanted to have a retail store that provided a clean space as, as a female owner. I, I think I was able to do that, so, you know, it was more for recreation, but it wasn't that, like, 60% of the 30,000 people that came to my store in that one year came for medical reasons.
So just to, for my own clarification then, and edification, does a medical marijuana store require a medical professional on site? Is that...
My understanding is that if you are a medical store, that you've gotten a prescription or you hold a medical card, and that's how you access the cannabis from some of, I, I know that the city of Vancouver has licenses not just for retail, but they have it also for, like, the, a social enterprise type of situation or like a, a society. That's not how I ran my store. I ran my store in a retail framework, however, just like how you could go to a vitamin store and purchase vitamins for your health, that's how we ran our store.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that.
No problem.
Councillor Blythe?
Thanks so much for being here. I wonder if you could share, you mentioned about why you went into cannabis. What was your professional background before that?
I worked at a bank for eight years, I have a trust background, I, I executed wills and estates. I executed wills and estates. After working at the bank for that amount of time, I went traveling and then that's when I've gotten older, my family's gotten older, and my family was looking for alternative ways to deal with pain. It opened me up to this world. I was not a cannabis user until I opened the store. Sorry, what was the first part of your question?
That was my question.
My background?
Well, in that you had said that the reason that you started, so it just had me ask, what would you do before that?
So I just wanted to push on that. So opening the store was on that premise. However, when the store was actually opened, and you know, candidly, I'll say, I thought that my target audience was going to be young and recreational users. However, it turned into the fact that most of my, I would say about the fourth or the fifth month, based on word of mouth, older clientele started to come in, people over 50, dealing with multiple sclerosis and different ailments and wanting a place that was clean, it was bright, the windows were clear, you could see outside, and inside it didn't feel like you were in somebody's basement. And it really turned into a different type of retail store, like a cannabis retail store. Again, 60% of my 30,000 customers were there for health reasons, not recreational reasons.
Okay, got it. And you don't have to answer this question, but I, given that you are sort of more on the retail side, and we are speaking to what we're hearing about is around the medical need around pain and management and withdrawal and things like that. And then you've addressed or commented on the exclusionary zoning. I wonder what your take is on some of the new businesses we see popping up, like the Donnelly Group. I don't even want to actually say what it's called because I find it offensive. You know, some of these sort of much more progressive retailers and how, because there is a genuine concern, and I think it's well-founded. So as an independently owned retail business, what's your thought on that?
So I'm a rule follower. I want to follow the rules. And that's why I'm in queue for the same model that the Donnelly's are now open in. However, as a retail store, you can still mandate how you run your store, just like how a restaurant can, you know, work their restaurant differently than the next restaurant. I'm in a community in east Vancouver where the, you know, people can't afford, like, we had cannabis that was expensive and high-quality and we had budget cannabis. And I just want to create a store that's safe and clean, where we have legal cannabis that's tested by the federal government, and I want people to have fair access to that cannabis.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks. Thanks for staying on time there, Counselor Bligh as well. Counselor Carr, questions to speaker?
Thanks very much. Thank you for coming in. Appreciate that. And I'm interested, you know, this motion as a recommend, the therefore be resolved part of it talks about the enabling low-cost legal cannabis options for the downtown east side, potentially on the model of a community cannabis store with a social enterprise and research focus. Do you, how do you, what do you think that means? And just the work that you did, does that match this? Or maybe you could just describe for me what you think that?
So it's a bit difficult because the cost is all mandated by the licensed producers and the province of B.C. puts a 14% tax on whatever the amount per gram that these licensed producers are selling at. I'm confident, just looking at some of the other states in the U.S., that costs will go down. I do believe the cost, the way they are right now in the retail framework, won't work for many people on the downtown east side. I'm hoping that based on volume and based on where the store is located, that we could keep our costs and our margins incredibly low so people can access legal cannabis and not have to go towards the black market. And that's sort of what we're creating here in the city of Vancouver and the province of B.C. by not having some of these costs come down, by not having more stores open, legal stores open in the store. People still are continuing to access the black market. I think we could work together. I do strongly believe there should be a group that the City Council could put together. Maybe it has some people that work from the downtown east side, retail store owners, and we can come together and really create some solutions to some of these problems. I'm a believer that in time, everything will work out, but it's just unfortunate that, I know that this motion is for opioids, and I did deal with some of the individuals that came from the downtown east side up to the store on Commercial Drive. I don't have any firsthand knowledge in terms of how it impacted their lives greatly. They just told me that it did. So I do think by having more stores and more supply, the costs will come down and people will have better access to clean illegal cannabis.
Okay, you just mentioned that you are thinking or suggesting that council put together a group that can find solutions. And that means solutions to a problem. Is it the location, the restriction of location in the downtown east side that's a problem?
I think that's one issue. I know Counselor Frye said he disagreed with me, but I don't believe in, like, if something is legal, I don't understand necessarily why, say, it can't be in Chinatown, it can't be on Robson Street, it can't be in the downtown east side. I understand that these parameters were put in place a long time ago when the city of Vancouver was progressive and liberal enough to allow retail cannabis in the city of Vancouver. But now that we've pushed forward and the federal government has legalized it, I don't understand these exclusions today.
Thanks. That's your time, Counselor Carr. Counselor Kirby Young, questions?
Hi. Thanks for being here. So you touched on, I just want to follow up on a question. You touched on something I was going to ask about, and that's really that the price as an operator is regulated, right? So when I try to think, okay, well, if you want to have a social purpose store, and the idea is not only to provide better access to cannabis for people on the downtown east side, but price being the other point. But as an operator, you wouldn't be able to do that unless somehow there was a, it was funded as part of a research study, it was coming from the government, or you wouldn't be able to offer a lower cost product because of the regulations, because you have to sell it for what you have to sell it for, right?
Right. So, and that's why I'm saying, like, if the store could be open and continue running in different parts of the city and you had volumes and people were not going to illegal stores, then with more volume, the margins can be lower.
Right.
Like, right now, I was looking at what the wholesale cost was.
Sort of based on a business model, because I think the intent and the spirit of this agreement was two parts. It was kind of around access and the other part was around cost, right?
Yeah, so the government of B.C., the liquor cannabis regulation branch, their lowest cost per gram wholesale is $6 per gram. I know a lot of stores, including myself, was able to sell it at $6 per gram prior to legalization. Well, now, I won't necessarily be able to do that now, but hopefully if I have a large volume, then I don't have to, my margins don't have to be double what they were.
Right.
So I'm willing to, you know, keep the margins down, and as long as I can have the volume, then I can be that low-cost operator.
Right.
If that makes sense.
Yes, it does. Tricky in this case, I think, given kind of what the motion's trying to accomplish. But thank you. It's really great to have that perspective. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Counselor Kirby Young. And I have one question for you. You had referenced a group that could possibly come together. And I was reminded of the special council meeting that we had here at city of Vancouver. And I believe that there was a special group that was kind of maybe being considered, and that included the overdose prevention site, the Vancouver Police Department, and I believe in Vancouver Coastal Health, yes. And it was to explore options for the use of legal cannabis in preventing deaths from the overdose crisis. And do you think that that group under the mayor's task force is sufficient or the appropriate place to kind of deal with that, considering it does have Ms. Bligh's group represented in it?
Yeah, I was not familiar of such group, but yes, I definitely think a group like that could listen to some of the difficulties that legal cannabis retailers are facing. So there's a lot of obstacles for me to open my store, including the city of Vancouver and the administrative staff that work for the city of Vancouver. So if there are some barriers that can be crossed, then yes, I'm happy to sit in a group and express what those barriers are so that we can be open in the legal framework and offering legal cannabis to the consumers of the city of Vancouver.
Okay, thank you. Another question that I have now, you've mentioned that, and thank you for your patience in the process as well. I've had people come to me that have tried to do this and to try and do it the right way. And, I mean, I did the math last year. I said, look, $30,000 for a business license, and I'm not even saying that that's what it should be. You can argue that another day. But some people were paying $250 tickets. $10 a year.
They're a thousand now.
That's a lot cheaper than $30,000. So do you think also we need to ramp up enforcement on those that are operating outside of the city's bylaws and make sure that we instead are rewarding those who are following the city's policy, bylaws, and doing what you're trying to do, which is become a legal store?
Absolutely. I, my heart goes out to the people like Sarah's group who are trying to help individuals that are suffering from the opioids crisis that we're having in Vancouver. But there are many stores in the city of Vancouver that are benefiting off of lack of enforcement and are still open. I know that the Supreme Court's hearing, or the decision that they made some while ago had shut down some stores, but of course, it irks me when I'm like walking down the street and I see that people are open and operating and the city of Vancouver asked me to close when after, you know, my landlord, I was issued those tickets and I have settled all of my tickets. And I'm trying to follow all the rules that the city of Vancouver has given me, but then, you know, I can see that my competitors are still staying open. There has to be a better way of doing this.
And that's my time, but thank you. I really do appreciate it, what you're doing.
All right, thank you.
And thanks for staying, to all of you. Next on the list is Dana Larson. Mr. Larson, you've been here before?
I have.
Timer to the right, and I will reset the timer here, and I'll start your timer now.
All right, well, thanks for having me here to talk about this issue. I think it's very important. I'll note that I'm not wearing this shirt for this meeting. I was at a protest earlier, and that's why I'm not wearing my normal suit and tie. I support this motion, but I don't think it's going to have a lot of success because trying to work within the federal government system to provide accessible, affordable cannabis is not going to be successful. The federal system is not designed to allow cannabis to be provided in an affordable way or to be provided at a lower cost. And medical cannabis is specifically not allowed to be sold at any of these legal shops. And I've heard the word dispensary used to describe the legal shops, but they are not dispensaries. They cannot use that term to describe themselves. They cannot talk about medical cannabis to people, and they cannot provide cannabis for medical purposes. They are forbidden from doing so. And there was said earlier that it's easy to access medical cannabis, but it's actually very, very difficult. Got to go to a doctor. Doctors will charge you hundreds of dollars to get this because it's not a prescription, it's a recommendation. And because of that difference in paperwork, doctors can charge you an arm and a leg to get access. Then you've got to make a payment online. If you don't got a credit card, very challenging to do. And then you got to get this sent to you by mail and it'll arrive a week or two later if that company happens to be in stock with the strains that you're looking for. And many of these companies have prioritized recreational cannabis or prioritized sending cannabis to Germany or other countries, so they're running low on stock. So the medical cannabis program is not easily accessible. And if you are homeless or poor or don't have easy access to the internet or can't wait a week or two to get your medicine, then it's just not working for those folks at all. And I feel an irony here because we're talking about increasing cannabis access in the downtown east side, but of course, I ran a dispensary in the downtown east side for over 10 years at 880 East Hastings. And we definitely see ourselves as a social enterprise and a nonprofit-focused organization. We've been the primary donors to the High Hopes Foundation when that was operating. We've also been one of the biggest donors to the Cannabis Substitution Project that Neil Magnussen is going to talk about. And we also provide on an individual basis compassionate pricing or discounts or deals for those that need that. Now, we've kept our dispensary open at 880 East Hastings, but we're not selling cannabis there anymore. Our customers are still coming in and we say, oh, you can go to our spot on Thurlow in the West End because that's allowed to operate. So we've got a good two-thirds of our members leaving the downtown east side, traveling to our dispensary in the West End and having lineups there to access our cannabis. And I just can't understand why that is preferable to having access in the downtown east side. And in my opinion, the restrictions on the downtown east side and cannabis access in there in general is really kind of condescending to that community that, well, people on the West End and in other parts of the city, they can handle cannabis access, but you guys in east Vancouver or in the downtown east side, you can't handle too much cannabis there. I see that as kind of a problem. So I hope this program succeeds, but the reality is trying to work within the federal legal system, it's not going to make it successful.
And that is your time, Mr. Larson. I do have a question for you. Let me start my own timer. I'll also start yours so you can see how much time I have. Am I not helpful sometimes? So you had mentioned that at your dispensary on Hastings Street, East Hastings Street?
That's right, 880 East Hastings.
I didn't quite get the address. That's that you don't sell cannabis there any longer?
We were one of the ones covered in that injunction and the court, we would have been in contempt of court if we'd stayed open. So we were still open as a place, but we can't do any sales there anymore under threat of pretty severe legal action.
So I know that this motion talks specifically about cannabis, but I know that you have also spoken about mushrooms and treating and using mushrooms for, I suppose, as, I don't want to call it a solution, what I've heard is that you've advocated for the use of mushrooms to combat the overdose crisis. Is that correct?
I wouldn't say that mushrooms or cannabis is the solution to the overdose crisis. They can help some people reduce or eliminate opiate use, but the real solution to the opioid overdose crisis is a safe supply of opiates and a safe supply of heroin.
And we did have the Naomi trial in Vancouver. And I remember that. I also remember the fact that they closed down. It was very short-lived. Looking at sort of our dispensary system, and you and I during the campaign, we had a chat at the All Candidates Forum I attended that was hosted by the cannabis community. And regardless of the business license, that's maybe a motion somebody else will put forward one day, and we can talk about that there. Question that I asked is, do you think that it's fair that some people stay open and pay? And I asked a previous speaker the same question. First is those who paid the $30,000 license fee. Do you think a storefront should stay open if the city has said, no, you cannot lawfully be open?
Yeah, I think you're looking at it all backwards. It's the bylaws and the restrictions that are too harsh and are too powerful and too controlling, these limitations of 300 meters between dispensaries, limitations of access to schools. When we started our dispensary, we were entirely in violation of the law. And I tell you, I intend in finding another location of the downtown east side, reopening, continuing to defy the city, continuing to provide cannabis to those in that community. I'm not going to be in contempt of court, but I'm not going to stop providing cannabis to those who need it because I see every day the benefits. I have so many people that tell us how grateful they are for this access. I could have brought a lot of folks in here to talk about how cannabis has helped them reduce or eliminate opiate use, but getting people here and the structure of these meetings is challenging. But no, I don't think that. I think that the city should change their bylaws rather than trying to enforce broken bylaws as they are.
And do you feel that you're going to pursue the same model with mushrooms?
I'm not sure what we're going to do with mushrooms. We're doing mail order right now, but it's kind of a separate issue, but we'll see about a dispensary. I think the city should be working with us and giving permits and be more open with their licenses. And in reality, we need a heroin compassion club.
That's my time, but Counselor Frye has questions for you. I'm just trying to be fair. Thank you.
Mr. Larson, thanks for joining us. And I would like to thank you for not bringing in an army of people. I know you could have. And for our benefit, thank you because these meetings go on pretty long. And actually, less is more sometimes.
I think you've got a lot of emails from people and that kind of.
And less is more. So what I wanted to touch, you know, and I'm familiar with your old location on Hastings. I live in Strathcona. I know that a lot of folks at Raycam were really concerned, but I also know anecdotally that you ran a very good operation at the dispensary. However, the guys next door to you previously, the weed store, didn't run a solid operation. In fact, it was anecdotally not a well-run operation and actually was sort of precipitated a lot of those concerns around bubble zones, around community centers because of that very behavior that was lacking in an ethical standard that I think the dispensary actually displays. I do think the dispensary does a good job. So I have to challenge the assertion that we shouldn't have restrictions and bubble zones and that kind of nature because not all retailers are equal.
Well, then you just deal with that retailer, right? I mean, if somebody's behaving irresponsibly, that should be on that person, but I don't see the need to block off whole areas of town. But I take your point.
Okay, so now, and I know your reputation as a real advocate and a champion of the benefits of cannabis, and I'm curious why you haven't pursued this more medicinal model. I appreciate what you said about difficulty in getting doctor's notes and stuff, but I don't think that that's insurmountable, given the amount of service providers we have in the downtown east side, for instance.
We are a medical model at our dispensary.
But you're not licensed as a medicinal?
Well, we've been open over 10 years now. For the first eight or nine years, we required medical documentation. We turned away a lot of people. A couple of years ago, we stopped requiring medical documentation. We turned away a lot of people. A couple of years ago, we stopped requiring medical documentation. I still see us as being medical, but like a non-prescription kind of a medication because we can offer medical advice and guidance on people who are seeking to use these products. But why we didn't seek to, I'm not sure what your question is, why we didn't seek?
A medicinal license as opposed to a recreational.
From the city of Vancouver, you mean?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, we're not, we weren't able to apply for anything there. 880 East Hastings is zoned industrial purposes, even though it's full of red commercial businesses. And with an industrial zoning, you can't go to the Board of Variance, you can't get an approval. And the system that Division Vancouver created around medicinal dispensaries, compassion clubs, they were so restricted that even the B.C. Compassion Club Society was not able to qualify as a compassion club. So those rules were really very difficult and almost impossible to follow under that standard. But I do consider us a medicinal cannabis dispensary.
Okay. I'm almost out of time, but I, that's an interesting point you raised. I do feel that there is that distinction. And I worry about the retail component, retail recreational and conflating it with medicinal, especially in an area that's clearly asking for medicinal intervention.
Create a special type of dispensary license for medicinal ones and allow those to be in there. And I think we would all support something like that.
All right. Thank you.
Oh, don't go away yet. Counselor Carr has questions. Great. Counselor Carr.
Yep. Thanks, Mr. Larson, for coming in. I really appreciate that. I'm interested, you've had a lot of experience in this field and you, were you here when the people from the Vancouver Coastal Health?
Yes, I heard their testimony, yeah.
Okay. So I'm interested in knowing from your experiential point of view, what, how often do you think you've seen any evidence of people who have really had more severe, either mental health or, yeah, mental health more than anything, reactions or consequences to the use of cannabis?
Cannabis is definitely not for everybody, but typically people who don't get benefit out of it, don't seek it out. So there's lots of heroin users I've talked to. We talk about our thing. They're like, I don't want that. That stuff makes me anxious. It makes, I don't like it. I don't want it. It's not for them. But in terms of seeing people have some kind of immediate reaction or a breakdown or whatever, I've never seen that happen. I wouldn't say it doesn't happen. It's not very common. And the solution for those people is don't use cannabis or maybe use lower THC and higher CBD products or something like that. But I wouldn't say this is a solution for everybody and I would never say that cannabis is going to solve the opioid crisis because it's not. But it can definitely help some people reduce or eliminate their opioid use and that is something we should be encouraging.
Okay. And what about, I'm sure that you've been, you know, reviewed the kind of medical literature that's out there. There's some dispute over current studies as to whether or not they're showing the effectiveness of the use of cannabis and treating pain, for example, or even anxiety, though there's one side saying it could increase anxiety. Anyway, from your point of view, is the science still out on this? Do we need a lot more research? Is there research that is, from your opinion, trustworthy because of the kind of research that, or yeah, the size of sample?
I think we always need more research. I'm never against that, but I think we know enough to act. And I think we're really in a situation of triage where we're dealing with an immediate crisis of multiple deaths every day. And that needs to inform our actions, you know? The main thing should be, is there real evidence of harm that's going to come out of this? And if there isn't, then I think we should move forward. It was brought up, the study that was done, there were some studies showing that the American states with medical cannabis access had lower overdose rates. A new study has come out conflicting that information. My understanding is the newer study was including states that had like CBD only laws or very restrictive medical access. And that, and that was why it didn't show such significant results. But if you just look at American states that have real access through dispensaries and it's properly accessible, you do see a reduction in the overdose rate.
Okay. Thank you.
That's your questions, Counselor Carr? Okay. And you're out of time. Thank you, Mr. Larson.
That's it. All right. Thank you very much.
That is. Neil Magnuson, founder, director of Cannabis Substitution Project. Mr. Magnuson? No, no, sorry. We have a process. So the, yeah. Not just you. Rules are the same for everyone.
Well, sometimes you got to cross lines, right?
And I'll, as you've heard, three minutes. Timer to your right, and I will start your timer now.
Yeah, I need five, by the way. Thank you for having this discussion and allowing me to speak to you. My name is Neil Magnuson. I'm a longtime rights activist, born and raised in Vancouver. And for the past two plus years, I've been the director of the Cannabis Substitution Project, operating out of Van Doo. In case you don't know, the CSP, we give out care packages containing four to six high-dose cannabis edibles along with a couple of joints to over 250 people twice a week. This represents a real safe supply. I showed you before. As a way out of addiction to opioids and other street drugs, despite what Dr. Daly says. And we are a private and a public health initiative. We are a public health initiative. In the population of people we are helping, there are over 100 people who are now clean from the problematic drugs they were using and now only use cannabis. That's what they report to us. I personally know many dozens of former addicts that say cannabis saved their lives. And in fact, there's thousands of people across the country who share this experience. Our project should be evaluated. There are numerous studies of late that confirm the effectiveness of cannabis, especially in the form of concentrates and high-dose edibles, both for pain and for replacing opioids and other dangerous street drugs, including the study by M.J. Malloy, who worked with us on our project, interviewed many of our people, and I know that's what they told him. There's so much evidence that it works. Oh, my God. I presented numerous studies to Van Doo when I first pitched this project. I'm not sure how many lives need to be saved by replacing opioids and other street drugs with cannabis before there's an action to make sure it's available for people as an option. The hypocrisy is outrageous. Alcohol kills and mains a similar number of people, yet there's little talk of that. And there's literally thousands of recreational alcohol dispensaries in Vancouver. Big Pharma also kills thousands of people, yet there's drugstores on every major street in the city. The prohibitions and restrictions on cannabis accessibility are outrageous. And in comparison, and the lack of access is definitely resulting in death. The whole history of prohibiting cannabis is full of lies and corruption about cannabis. The actual truth is, is that it's an amazingly beneficial and benign gift of nature. DEA Judge Francis Young declared that cannabis is one of the safest therapeutically active compounds known to man. The time is now for our public servants, you, to stop stigmatizing cannabis users, stop the reefer madness and the harm being done by prohibition, and embrace the benefits of life-saving properties of cannabis. It's been long overdue for decades. Storefront medical dispensaries that provide high-dose cannabis edibles and concentrates need to be allowed and supported. Bad laws are killing people, so bad laws be damned. When laws fail to prevent harm and instead cause harm, they are of no force and effect. Good people break bad laws to protect vulnerable people, and that's what the CSP is doing. This city and this council has an opportunity and a duty to lead the way in righting these wrongs and save lives. So far, our project has been ignored.
But Counselor Carr has questions for you. Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Magnuson?
Hi.
Hi. So thanks for coming in. And I have several questions about your particular project. But one I want to start with is the statement you made at the beginning, "Our project should be evaluated." What did you mean by that? Like a scientific?
Well, Coastal Health has never been there, for example. You people have never been there, for example. I dare you to come down on a Sunday or a Thursday at noon to Van Doo and see the hundreds of people that are so thankful to get what they're getting and thank us every time for saving their lives. It'll bring tears to your eyes and you will immediately make motions to do something to help us serve this population. We're still not meeting the demand.
Okay. So you've, you said that you did have, M.J. Malloy did do some?
We're part of the study that he did, yes.
Okay. But other than that, there's been no approach around doing research on the effect of your?
Nope. The speaker that asked to speak that was denied is here to build those groups that are helping on the downtown east side with the overdose crisis, and he is going to do some more empirical information gathering on our project. We have our own internal studies that we're doing and information that we gather. And we have our own media that does things as well. We've had a little bit of coverage. I was in the Georgia Strait just recently and the Courier did a story on our project a year and a half ago. We've been 28 months. We haven't had Global down there. We haven't had CKNW down there or CTV. And it's outrageous. I mean, we're giving out well over 1,000 high-dose edibles twice a week into the downtown east side. For Dr. Daly to say that there's no shred of evidence that it helps, well, she hasn't been there to see what we're doing. She should come and talk to the people down there and see what we're doing because there's lots of evidence that cannabis is saving lives.
So in terms of evidence, I know that this is anecdotal because it hasn't been, you're not doing a science, scientific research-based methodology on this. But you have seen a lot of people. So in your experience, are there any cases where you have seen very negative health outcomes amongst individuals as some of the earlier presenters on this subject noted?
I've seen none of that. I mean, there is some concern that perhaps the sativa strains can aggravate some types of psychosis. And so we've stayed away from, I've stayed away from ordering sativa-based edibles to hand out to people, although we do have some. I've had zero reports of any of that. In fact, cannabis helps people with their anxiety and their depression in many cases. But I certainly concur with what Sarah and Dana had to say, that for some people, it does cause anxiety. They don't like the effects and they just don't use it. What we have had is a number of, I think everybody in our project has eaten too much. We give out care packs that look like that. And there's probably about 450, maybe 500 milligrams of cannabis within that one care pack. We caution everybody to start low and go slow. It was about three or four months in when I was presenting to Van Doo's board about our project. And I said, I think we've had less than all the fingers on one hand of people that have eaten too much. And there was like 13 board members and 12 of their hands went up and they all had stories about how they, you know, couldn't get out of bed for two days or they hung on to a pole all night. And it's not very comfortable for people to eat too much, but they're a bit shy to admit it. And they don't usually do that again. And many of them, most of them keep using cannabis, just find the right dose.
Thank you. Three minutes. It's a pilot project, but we'll find out at the end how it's working. So thank you very much.
Yeah, there's a lot more that I could say. I'll tell you. I think it's unconscionable to send people back to the black market.
Please do fill out our satisfaction survey online about the pilot process. I'm urging everyone to do that.
All right.
But do, I really do appreciate this.
There's a lot more we could have covered.
All of you for coming and for staying. And I know that it's been several weeks as for several of the motions that we're dealing with today. And that may be the case moving forward. We'll try and get through the rest of the motions here. So now we move into debate and discussion. But I see Counselor, oh, my apologies. Oh, I'm so sorry. I didn't mean to miss you on the list. Marion, is it Allert? Allert. Ms. Allert, I'm so sorry. I thought, I thought I didn't have you on there. Oh, just a moment. Just before you start, one moment. Counselor Kirby Young?
Thank you. I just wanted to interrupt the quick point of privilege to say that my computer is not working. So I'm not going to be able to vote or ring in to ask questions. I'm going to have to raise my hand. But I now do have access to email on a laptop.
Okay. So would you be, just to make sure we're clear for tonight, when I call for people to vote, if you could let the clerk know, signal the clerk how you're going to vote?
Yes, I can do that. I just wanted to make you aware because it might, if I want to ask questions, it'll, or it might slow down my response trying to.
And then you can get a vote assist from the clerk, which will be helpful because then it will record your vote.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And sorry that your computer isn't working. That one doesn't, I've had that computer before. Thank you very much. My apologies. I obviously was looking at a different list. Ms. Allert, let me just start your timer. You'll see three minutes there to your, or sorry, you'll see the timer to your right. And you have three minutes to address counsel. You may have questions. Thank you. Go ahead.
My name's Marion and I'm the executive director at Van Doo. For some of you who may not know us, it's the Vancouver Area Network of Drug Users. And we're a grassroots democratic organization. It's peer-led and user-run. So I'm their executive director. I'm not a user, but I get my cues from them. So, and so does my colleague and two other part-time people. And way back, we coined a phrase at Van Doo, "Nothing About Us Without Us." And I bring that up because I agree with the young lady who was the entrepreneur at the dispensary who suggested that perhaps a committee be formed. And I think that's a really great idea to have everybody, all the stakeholders, available to talk about this issue so it doesn't get mired down, which it easily could be. The way we do things at Van Doo is we have a 15-member board. Everything goes through the Board of Directors. We're not perfect, but we wade through a lot of issues in a week. And the way we do things is we just start. We start, we put things in motion that we think are going to work. It's like the dirt on the street tells us what's wanted and needed, and we listen to what the people say in the meetings that we have every day. And we would like to wait for research and knowledge and all that. It's very slow-moving machinery once you get into that. So we prefer to do a more experiential way, use empirical knowledge that we have from our people who, some of them live on the streets, some of them are housed, some of them are working. Some of them are very functional. And really, there's no face to drug users. Mostly what you see in the downtown east side are people who are dealing with poverty as well as drug addiction. Anyway, we support safe supply and opiate substitution. And we've been very happy since Neil moved in the cannabis substitution program at Van Doo because the opiate crisis has been very hard on us in a lot of different ways, as you can imagine. And we've sustained a lot of losses. Insight and the OPS that Sarah runs and Van Doo, none of them have had overdose deaths. So there's a difference between overdose and overdose deaths. So we deal with overdose on a daily basis, but they don't result in overdose deaths because we follow some pretty simple and powerful guidelines. And our people are experienced and they know, oh, does that mean I'm out of time? Oh, it's a warning. Okay. So, you know, we've done some things that are unsanctioned and they've worked really well. And right now, we're working legally and.
And you are out of time. Counselor Swanson and Counselor Bly both have questions for you.
Thank you.
Counselor Swanson to the speaker.
Thank you for coming and waiting all this time. One of the recommendations says the Vancouver Direct Staff to engage the Liquor and Cannabis Regulation Branch to indicate Vancouver's interest in addressing unintended aspects, et cetera, et cetera. Would it be good if we put to engage with Van Doo and people who use drugs as well as with the Liquor Control Board?
Sure.
Okay. What would you say, the three people from VCH came and made their statements about how the research wasn't proven yet. What would you, just from talking to Van Doo members, how would they respond to that?
As an organization and members of Van Doo, I think they would say we've been researched to death. Research is research and research can look a lot of different ways and you can make research mean a lot of different things. And there are things to learn about cannabis, absolutely. And we want things to be. We find, you know, the people that come to Van Doo on Sundays, and I tell you, people are lined up around the block to get their weekly portion or their bi-weekly portion of cannabis. And the accolades come in on a daily basis. I don't have to ask any questions. People come and tell me all the time.
And Van Doo helped found Insight, right?
Yes.
When it wasn't legal, right?
Yes. Well, we had unsanctioned overdose prevention sites at that time. In fact, we had a little place on Carroll Street and had a big lock on it. And the police would come and saw it off and we'd put another one on. And then that went on for a couple of days. But the police finally gave up.
So sometimes listening to the people who, to the "Nothing About Us Without Us" people actually results in something that the higher-ups start listening to after a few decades.
True, true. And we appreciate VCH. They fund us. So.
Yeah.
We're their fan club, but we just happen to do things in a different way.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all your questions? Okay. Counselor Bly, questions to the speaker.
Hello, Ms. Allert, and thanks very much for being here as well as, you know, waiting to speak. So when you're, you just shared there around your relationship with Vancouver Coastal Health. So what's the ongoing conversation in terms of research? And it's just interesting that, you know, you sort of put the lock on, the police come, put it on, and eventually they give up. You know, so how have you managed to do that with the support of Vancouver Coastal Health's funding?
Well, I think there's a lot of difference between people who work on the front line and people who work in offices. And everybody has their own job to do, but it's easier when you work on the front line to see what works. when you work on the front line to see what works, because it's immediately evident. So, we want to see results on the street. It takes a long time for the results to happen on the street. But with, you know, the way that we operate in terms of overdose prevention, I think all the people that are involved in overdose prevention would tell you that there's some very simple guidelines to follow, and you follow them, and you save lives. It's very simple.
So, in considering the motion that's before us, how do you think that will help? If at all? I don't want to put words in your mouth, but...
Well, regulation is a, you know, it's a complex situation. So it's good to bring, I don't know, it's really nice to have that level or that balance of hearing the experial, experiential and lived experience of people who are actually using cannabis, the medical cannabis, all the other products, and different drugs on the street. It just gives you immediately a cross-section of perspectives. The way our board works, you know, there's different people who experience different things, who need different things. Most of them are opiate users, and some of them are illicit drinkers, and some of them are just use cannabis. And they all have their own perspectives, and together, it brings, I don't know, brings a powerful, kind of an alchemy to the decision-making processes.
Okay. And then my final question is, are you sort of at capacity for the number of people that you can help and reach at this time?
In terms of cannabis? Well, that's, we're not meeting the demand.
You have the ability to grow within what you've got?
The lines used to be about 90 people long, and now they're up to 250, 300 people.
That line up?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks very much. That is, that's your, you're done, councillor Bly? Okay? You just had a few seconds left, but it's yours. Thank you very much. My apologies for not calling on you.
No problem.
And thanks to all of the speakers for coming, and as others have said, for waiting patiently. Okay, council, so we have a motion that has been moved by councillor Bly, and we'll move into debate and decision on this motion. Councillor Frye, I see you on the queue. Okay? I'm just, I'll just advance you.
Thanks, Chair.
On the queue, just a moment. Start your timer now, yes?
Well, I very much appreciate councillor Bly for bringing this motion forward, and I appreciate all the speakers who came and spoke to us on, it's been a very informative conversation. I certainly appreciate the inputs from coastal health as well. You know, I live in the neighborhood, so I do take some of their concerns seriously, and I recognize that there's a delicate balance, and things, you know, certainly wouldn't want to see an increase in psychosis or anything of that nature. That being said, I've also got my own anecdotal observations of cannabis therapeutic use in the, in vulnerable populations, and I, I'm no scientist, but I see it have, as an effective solution. So, with that said, I do want to make sure that we're approaching this with a very thoughtful and methodical, method...
Metho...
Yeah, what she said. Approach, so I've supplied an amendment, a couple of amendments to the clerk.
Okay, wait till they come up?
And there's a lot there, but really, it just tries to get this a little bit more focused into the medicinal approach. I certainly appreciate what Mr. Larson and others said about the challenges with how we've been addressing medicinal licensing in this city, and I think that that's something that we could be working on, and I hope that this motion kind of gets us there. I do think that there is a big difference between operators, and I respect that the operators who came and spoke to us today are ethical. I don't know that that's necessarily all the case, though, and I don't want to open this up to a vulnerable population finding a retail market for cannabis amongst a vulnerable population. This is the same, I consider it, as, as opening up liquor licensing in the downtown east side. We need to move thoughtfully.
I'm sorry, councillor Frye, it was just asked by the clerk to move us to amendment queue. Different chairs do it at different times, I usually do it at the beginning, but we were in the main queue, so if you could put yourself, actually, there we go, thank you.
Well, thank you, and I, and I think...
My apologies, go ahead.
Even though I was on the wrong queue, I think I mostly spoke to what I was getting at with this, and that's really that I want us to take a very methodical approach. Man, it's been a long day. A methodical approach, and really making sure that we're taking this slowly and purposefully, and so I've added some language to support more of a medicinal approach, referencing the medicinal sort of legislation, and then asking the mayor to write the Minister of Health, expressing an interest in supporting a clinical research program to supply and study medicinal cannabis as an alternative to opiates and more dangerous drugs in the downtown east side pursuant to the mayor's overdose emergency task force and recommendations for immediate action on the overdose crisis. Item F, secure space for clean supply project.
And that's all for now?
Yeah.
Okay, councillor Swanson, to the amendment introduced by councillor Frye.
I've got an amendment to the amendment.
Okay, have you sent it in to the clerk?
I have.
I have, oh, I just see it now. Okay?
Oh, it's just the red part there. The first red part, just to make sure that council engages with Van Doo and people who use drugs, as well as other people.
So, I'm just gonna, instead of asking myself a point of information, I'm gonna ask staff a question here. I just was, was wondering if this would, and I would have called a point of information if not, would this mean that, would people who use drugs, how would staff interpret that in the direction that you were taking back? Would that include the Overdose Prevention Society, or would that just include, would that be, is that broad in asking, we're asking staff to do something with a resolution? I was hoping the deputy city manager could tell me how he might interpret this, or staff who were working on this might interpret this.
So, Chair, we're struggling a little bit to understand what the actual direction here is. We'd understood the original motion as directing staff to engage with LCRB regarding provincial regulation. We're not sure how engaging with Van Doo and people who use drugs, we're just not, there seems to be multiple concepts being addressed in this particular motion now, and we're not entirely sure who we would be consulting about what.
That's what I was, that was my point of information, that was my concern, and that wouldn't mean the overdose prevention site was included, that would just be Van Doo, because I heard from some council members earlier, and considering the work that the mayor's doing, I just wanted to, people who use drugs would be in groups of people?
Yes, Chair, I think we could, in terms of addressing the population here, or the stakeholder group, Van Doo, people who use drugs, I think we, we know who that is.
Okay.
That's, that's definitely a community we can engage with. I think it would be helpful for staff to understand more what actually we are being asked to engage them about.
Okay, thank you. So councillor Swanson, would you, you know, I mean, a motion would have to be moved if there was going to be a short recess?
So, let me just explain.
Okay.
That I was thinking that staff could talk to Van Doo and people who use drugs to find out what their take was on the current zoning and development bylaw, as it relates to exceptions to it, and in relation to cannabis, just to consult with Van Doo about what the rest of the motion says, as well as with the LCRB.
Okay. I need to reset your timer, but not all of the timers. Actually, I can, because we're on this queue, can I? I'm gonna ask the clerk for assistance with that, to turn your timer on and reset it for this, because I had it on during my point of information. So, I'm not sure if that language, but what I will do is I'll ask staff if that was a point of information. Is that a point of information, councillor Swanson, as to how staff would interpret this?
What are you asking me?
Were you asking if that's how staff would interpret it?
No, I was saying how I interpret it.
Yes, but there, we're sending this to staff for them to interpret it, to do the policy work on it. So, would you, would, would you like, I'm just suggesting that if, if you wanted to work that through to make sure that what you meant is what staff understood, we could have a short recess in chambers, but to work out wording, so it didn't get...
Maybe just let Paul hold forth for a minute.
Chair, if I may, and through you to councillor Swanson, the explanation is helpful. I think part of the challenge we're having with the motion, the way it's drafted, is engaging with the LCRB on zoning and development issues, that's not within their scope. So we're really kind of struggling with the construct here, but I think we can work with this, with the, practically, we can figure out what to do with this now, I think, given the explanation that councillor Swanson has provided around the intent of the motion. But just to confirm, LCRB does not play any role in our zoning and development bylaw, and doesn't have any interest in what the city does around zoning and development.
Thanks. Okay. I just wanted to make sure that when sending things forward, that we're thoughtful, that they're going to be interpreted the way we meant, after several hours in this room? Okay. Councillor Bly, to councillor Swanson's amendment.
That was a holdover from speaking to...
Oh, sorry, I'm in amendment queue, just a mo... So, any other speakers this amendment? Okay, then, oh, councillor Carr. All right, to the amendment.
Yes, I know that we're not in a questioning period, but I feel like I would love to ask questions, because I'm certainly, at this point, I'm now confused about the intent of speaking to the LCRB. I see now, with this amendment to the amendment by councillor Swanson, that engaging with Van Doo and people who use drugs around the unintended aspects of the city's current zoning and development bylaw, et cetera, that, that is logically something that could happen, it makes sense to me. But I don't understand now, really, what, why the, what it is exactly we're going to engage with, with the LCRB, given the deputy city manager's comments, so I'm confused.
Just a moment, is that a point of information, councillor Carr?
Yeah, it is, actually.
I just want to remind council, you can ask a point of information through me, to the deputy city manager, and I'll ask him to answer that.
My question to you then, I mean, through you?
I think he heard you, I think he's standing up behind you already.
Thanks for the opportunity to clarify. So, again, there's a couple of things going on in this section of the motions, we understand. I think engaging the province, LCRB regarding the province's regulatory process, there is some substance there. Again, at this point in time, I'm not sure staff are clear exactly what we would be saying to them, but that may emerge through the remainder of the debate on this motion. But yes, there is a potential engagement there between staff and LCRB regarding the province's processes. I think we understand how that works. So if I read this, the two kind of substantive elements here, one would be some discussion with Van Doo and people who use drugs around the city's zoning and development bylaws and the impacts of that, and potentially some engagement with the province around their processes for licensing retail.
Right, thank you. I see my timer kept going, as the deputy city manager.
Oh, my apologies. That, that is, that's, yes. And I note that you were at a minute before, almost a minute, 53 seconds, actually, is what I had. I'm sorry, I thought I hit the button, it's been a bit difficult today.
That's okay.
But I will make sure that you are credited your time, councillor Carr.
Thank you. Okay, so, I am having a difficult time voting on this, because what I would really like to see is a differentiation between the consultations that staff would have with Van Doo and the current zoning and development bylaw piece of it, which the deputy city manager isn't, said, city manager said really isn't what we would be conferring with the LCRD on, or beyond, and differentiate than the, the LCRB, part of that to deal with the province's regulatory processes. That would be, to me, easier to handle, because, anyway, I just, I don't, I don't mind saying I support the consultations with Van Doo and people who use drugs, that makes sense for one piece of it, but somehow, I wish it could be made more clear in terms of direction to staff, although I'm sure they're brilliant enough to figure all of this out.
And you have an extra 45 seconds, that I will...
I'm fine.
...for you, just in case. Councillor Dominado, to councillor Swanson's amendment, the amendment.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I realize now I can't actually do an amendment, because what I was gonna do is propose, make a change, so that we could address it through proper consultation. And I don't know if councillor Swanson would like to make that amendment? I guess she can.
We cannot do that. Do you have a point of procedure?
Nope, that's okay. Thinking aloud.
Right. So, council, I just want to remind you, because I've heard similar comments about this, even though I think we should be calling points of procedure, if we wanted to know how to move forward with this, the only thing, the only options right now are to vote on this amendment, to have councillor Swanson withdraw this amendment, and then we, if there was a mover and council agreed to take a short recess, councillor Swanson could put forward another amendment, maybe seeking some advice from staff on the wording, to make sure it's what she, she wanted and what they understood to be. Or we can just vote on this motion and call the question. So I see councillor Bly is on the queue. Councillor Bly, to the amendment, to the amendment.
Thank you, Chair. So, I mean, I, I appreciate deputy city manager's comments around sort of working with the language, Van Doo particularly, as they've spoken here, and also people who use drugs. And this, of course, as every motion does, has gone before staff, and their feedback was incorporated into, into the motion as we see it now. And so I think really the intent there is, they are a part of the licensing process, so really just engaging with the LCRB to let them know that we are looking at this, and really just engaging different people that are already at the table. And it's really not to engage so much as simply to advise, is this is what we're looking at, and perhaps they would have some feedback for us, or some other way. So this is really just opening up the door that the staff can do their due diligence while exploring these different options as the motion outlines.
Councillor Swanson?
So, help me with the procedure here, I could withdraw that amendment and submit, and I just sent another one.
Okay. Did you, but don't forget, if you put it forward, we can't amend it. So, so if you, I'm just suggesting that if you had questions, to make sure that it was, that staff understood it to be the way you meant it to be, that we would have to deal with that again. Not sure if you've sent it to staff, that's up to you. So you'd like to withdraw your amendment? We would need unanimous support of council to do that? Is that your wish?
Nope.
Okay. So councillor Swanson has asked to withdraw her amendment. All in favor? Councillor Bly? Any opposed? Okay, that's withdrawn, so we're back to amendment queue one. And we have councillor Bly, actually councillor Swanson, you should have been on there. So what I'll do is I'll advance you, and then I will put councillor, well, I was gonna put councillor Bly back on, thank you. And then Mayor Stewart, oh, sorry, trying to keep the order straight, there we go. Councillor Swanson?
Yeah, so I just took that amendment out of that paragraph, and just have another further, the Vancouver City Council, direct staff to engage with Van Doo and people who use drugs, to consider what kinds of laws are best for implementing their needs around cannabis.
Councillor Swanson, have you indicated where you'd like to place this in the current amendment?
I was thinking just under the C.
I think that's all. I think that's all. Okay. Counselor Swanson, just a moment.
Wait a second, there is no C. Just the third, I was thinking of making a third part of A.
So the third part of A?
Yeah.
Okay. So I'll just wait for them to, for the clerks to put it in, and we'll have it up on screen. Okay, Counselor Swanson, is that, are you speaking to the? Are you speaking to the amendment? Counselor Swanson?
Well, I just think it's really important that we implement the Van Doo principle of nothing about us without us when dealing with policy around drugs. And so I think it's really, really, really important to talk to the people that know what they're talking about and experience it every day when we're making policy.
Okay, so I'm going to call the question on the amendment, the amendment. See no one else on the queue? Please vote on screen. Mayor Stewart? Okay. And we, and that passes with Counselor Hardwick in opposition. Okay. Now we're back to the amended amendment, and I have, is the queue correct? Should be. Counselor Swanson, anything else to?
No.
Okay. Counselor Bly, to the amended amendment.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Counselor Frye for thoughtful consideration of the resolutions, and I do think that this is in, you know, folding in all the feedback that we heard from Vancouver Coastal Health and our speakers as well, a more concise and elegant way to address what this motion is attempting to do. So I appreciate it and I support it wholeheartedly. Thank you.
Counselor, that's right, Mayor Stewart, to the amended amendment.
Right. To say that I support this, and I think it's a good adjustment to this motion, there is a section on contacting the health minister, is that right? I thought I saw that there. Yes, on the ad on the bottom. I'm already in pretty close contact with that office already because I noticed they had an opioid announcement and then didn't give any money to British Columbia, so I am now, I'm trying to get money for that from them now, but I'd be happy to explore this at the same time if this is passed, so thanks for that.
Thank you. Mayor Stewart, Counselor Dominado, to the amendment as amended.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I'm just about to send an amendment, so if someone else wants to speak first, I'm doing it on behalf of Counselor Kirby Young, so.
Well, I agree with Mayor Stewart, it's a good process. The way that we have done it before is let's run the clock unless somebody else is on the queue. I don't see anyone else on the queue right now.
Sounds good.
To speak to this, but you have up to five minutes, so.
That's the good news.
Oh, Counselor Carr, would like to?
Jump into the rescue.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I might as well make my, although there may be other amendments, at this point I'll make comments both on the motion itself, but specifically on Counselor Frye's amendments, which, and also Counselor Swanson's amendment. I think Counselor Swanson's amendment gets right to the heart of it, that, you know, we are really moving forward as a city that is looking at a different way of collaborating with people in all the decisions we make, so co-creative and collaborative decision-making, so speaking directly in terms of Van Doo is, I'm very much appreciative of that. I'm also appreciative of taking out, you know, some of the more descriptive reasons why we might be doing this and just getting to the heart of what we need to be doing. So I think that's what Counselor Frye has done in the amendment in the first A. It doesn't detract at all from the directive that's in that. And I really think that the addition of words like compassion clubs and the Health Canada's access to cannabis for medical purposes regulations, I mean, these are very clear directions also to staff to be investigating, so I think that those are, that clarification is useful. And in general, I just am very appreciative of the motion coming forward because I think that there is a real need to look at alternatives that are effective and prevent harm. And that's the way I look at medicinal marijuana or cannabis. And, you know, it's funny, I mean, I've always had that attitude, but really what changed my perspective on this was when my parents were still alive and all of them and all their friends were aging. For my parents who were, you know, they were liberal in many ways, but not really around the drug scene, but for them to actually sit down one day and say, look, all our friends have found that the medicinal cannabis options have made such a difference for them in their lives than getting off medications that made them feel horrible. I mean, prescribed medications that made them feel horrible. And it was an eye-opener for me, that especially elderly people, coming from a, you know, more conservative background, really saw the utility in searching out medicinal cannabis to make their lives and their health better.
Counselor Carr, that's all for you? Okay. I don't see anyone else on the queue, but I did see an email come in. Counselor Dominado, was your intention to go on the queue? All right, that may have been my, the reason I prompted that was just for council to know was I think I actually kicked Counselor Dominado off the queue. It may have been my fault. We have been here for several hours, but it's worth it, doing good work, so. Counselor Dominado, to the amended amendment.
Thanks, Madam Chair. So I've just sent in an amendment to the clerks and actually have just indicated I'm withdrawing the second part of that amendment, so there is one amendment, and I hope they can bring that up on the screen. And it is just in addition to B, a follow-up to Counselor Frye's amendment, and it's just to add the end as well as enabling and supporting ongoing research and data collection into the potential relationship and benefits of cannabis on the reduction of opioid use associated harms and overdoses. Can you get rid of the second part? That's the part I'm withdrawing, so it's for the clerks? Yeah, yeah, thanks. So this is just in follow-up to a conversation we heard about the importance of research and data collection in this ongoing work, and I think we heard that both from Vancouver Coastal Health as well as from other individuals who've spoken today. And I am doing this on behalf of Kirby, Counselor Kirby Young this evening, and so we just wanted to have that reflected because there's an opportunity there to support research and data collection going forward. That's the proposed amendment.
Thanks, Counselor Carr. Oh, sorry. Counselor Carr, I don't know how that happened. I'm going to put you right back on. There we go. All right, to Counselor Dom, oh, I was to move to amendment two. So put you on amendment two, and then, and start your time.
Great. The language in this amendment forwarded by Counselor Dominado makes sense to me, but the problem is its positioning. So if my understanding is correctly, it's going, oh, it's into going to B, I'm sorry. All right. I was looking at A. I think that this makes sense, and I think that there is a desire in the community to have that kind of research done, notwithstanding at least one comment that said we're tired of being researched, but in general, I think that there was a greater sense from me or by me, from the speakers, that certainly more research verifying their experiential and anecdotal comments to us seems to make sense, so I'd be supportive of that.
Just briefly to say that I support it, and I think we heard that loud and clear, and I absolutely want to ensure that we're covering all of the necessary actions to do right by everybody involved in this process, so thank you for bringing it forward.
Thanks. Okay. Calling the question, calling the vote? Please vote on screen. Uh, no, you shouldn't have. I'll reset the vote. No, that, unless, that may have been a holdover, I may have not cleared the vote from the last vote, so there we go. Okay. And, all right. And that passes uni, or that carries. That carries. So now we are back to the main motion as amended. Counselor Bly, you're on the queue? Oh, sorry. Oh, my apologies. To go back to, oh, the main queue. That's still a holdover, is it? Yes? Okay. Counselor Bly, I'm just going to, I'd like to, just with all of the changes to this, I was hoping to maybe get a copy of, it's hard for me to go back and forth on my screen. So council, can I call for a two-minute recess just to get a copy of this? Would that be all right? Thanks. Okay. In chambers, if one wants. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Two minutes, just to get a written copy and be able to see the changes. Thank you. Thank you. I have the motion in front of me. And Counselor Weeb? We're starting again. All right. So I am moving us to the main queue. And I don't see anyone on, oh, Counselor Bly? Sorry, yes.
No, I don't want to be on.
Oh, you didn't want to be. Okay. Well, I didn't put you on there. All right, so now we are going to vote on Counselor Frye's amendment as it's been amended. So council, please vote on screen. Okay. And that carries. All right. And then now we are back to the main motion, or sorry, now we are, now we are back to the motion, the amended motion. And I believe we have to vote on the amended motion? But I will, I'll confer with the clerk on that? We vote on the amended motion? Yes, that's what I thought. So please vote on screen. Okay. And it carries. All right. So, yes. I'm going to suggest that we do take a five-minute recess to stretch our legs. No? We only had half an hour for, I said I'd offer that, I heard from some that they'd like a break if not, if we don't have a motion. Okay. All right. And for some people, I'm sure it will just be till 10 o'clock tonight. We do have a reserve, I just want to mention for anyone watching at home that is concerned that we're not going to get through tonight, we do have a reserve booked from 6 till, to 10 p.m. tomorrow evening to complete the business of the Standing Committee and regular council. My understanding? Yes, Counselor Swanson, your point of information? Oh, let me get your microphone on. Just a moment.
We, is it A, is it possible to start earlier tomorrow? And B, if we don't finish tomorrow, do we have any idea when it will be continued?
Counsel, Counselor Swanson, I, I understand that I, if you give me one second, I'll check with the clerk, but I'm pretty sure that I know the answer to that. So Counselor Swanson, I, I've spoken with the clerk, and it's my understanding that we've been booked in a reserve for tomorrow evening. I know that, that a number of council members did have appointments, and that is how they usually confirm our availability by looking at our calendars. And the public was notified, so if we change things now, the public may not be aware that we're meeting earlier. So it's not good practice, so I wouldn't support it. That being said, if you wish to move a motion to do so, you may do that, but that's advice that I've been given from the clerks, and I support that. So we're moving on now to the, just a moment. Counselor Carr, yes?
Yes. Just a question around a process point here that deals with tomorrow night and the timing, and it's, I'm not sure about when I should do this, but after review of the earlier motions that are going to UBCM and the ability of staff to have prepared those motions, because the original motions were moved before, but mine was delayed, didn't come up two weeks ago as it should have, and is now, I am going to withdraw my motion to give time to prepare it in a format that is able to go to-
What is the point of parliamentary procedure?
So it is about whether I can indicate that to you now so that we can alert the speakers to that, that there will not be this motion, or this motion will be withdrawn tomorrow.
And can I, you asked a point of parliamentary procedure on the timing of that.
Timing, yes.
If we could reconvene in regular council to deal with it under urgent business? I'm not sure if it constitutes as that, but I could ask because it is a UBCM motion. I understand that we have done that before, so I will just check. Mm-hmm. Yes, I am. Thank you very much. I understand that because it is already referred to the Standing Committee meeting, if you chose to withdraw it, you could do so now.
Oh. Fantastic. I would like to withdraw my motion number eight from this.
Okay. And I, and I understand that that does not require a vote of council. You can withdraw that motion? Or has it been, it, yes. As I figured, because it was moved to Standing Committee, which meant that it had to be moved and seconded, so we will need a vote to withdraw it.
Right. And if I could just have on the public record, the reason for my withdrawal is just because this was delayed, because everything got moved many weeks later, and, and it was not considered and done within time for staff to be able to prepare the actual format for presentation to the UBCM, to my satisfaction, with the appropriate wherethas, as we saw with three earlier motions. So I don't feel that it would, it's in a forum able to go to UBCM successfully, and we still have some time by doing it next year.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Carr. Counselor Dominado, are you on to speak to this item? Just, just a moment.
Yes, Madam Chair, just on the subject of talking about, the question was raised about tomorrow night's, the council reserve, and you said that we could make a motion. So it's not on that. So it'll be that after. So we'll get to that. So we'll deal with this item first, and then-
I, I would prefer before we make a motion that, that staff was able to check the quorum, at least. So if that is your intent, I would hope that we could work with the clerk to check quorum on that. So perhaps you might want to do that, but I'm, counsel, can we please just deal with one item that's on the floor at a time? Really, really think that that's just, it's going to be easier for those who are following along also. So right now, what we have is a motion on the floor to withdraw from Counselor Carr, and I would suggest, if she wants it formally on the record, that we vote on screen. Okay? So the vote to withdraw, Counselor Carr's motion, and I'm going to call the vote, sorry, after we set the vote, then I'll call the vote. Okay. And that, Counselor Weeb, you haven't voted, and Counselor Dominado. I just suggested that twice. Thank you very much. I know it's getting late. Thanks.